President Garcia, you're now in record mode.
Great, thank you, Dr. Campos. Good morning, everyone. Get started right a few minutes. Okay, well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Public Works for Wednesday, June 8, 2022.
Everyone, for Dan and Campos, Executive Officer, establishing roll call for today. We have President Garcia, Vice President Vegas, President Protem Davis, and Commissioner Corzan and Reyes. President Garcia, you do have a quorum. President Garcia, at this time, we currently do have one caller on the line under General Public Comment. We also have one caller on the line for item number two, five, and six. In addition to the callers on the line, we did receive a Google comment on public general public item under General Public Comment, item number three, five, and 12. Those comments will be distributed to all commissioners momentarily through your email and will be distributed to all commissioners. Again, callers on the line for General Public Comment, two, five, and six. President Garcia, also on item number two, the caller on the line is from Council District 15, and would like to hear the presentation first and then make those commentaries if it's okay with US Chair.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Okay, well, thank you for that, Dr. Campos. Given that we have public comment, is he coming now?
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and do that. Dr. Tom Williams, if you can please unmute your microphone at this time, you'll have two minutes to speak under General Public Comment. Please go ahead.
Under General Public Comment, I made an error. It should be for the items six and seven rather than five and six. So I would like to speak on six and seven. For public comment, so the Protected Tree Ordinance is under your jurisdiction. The clearing of protected trees is under the jurisdiction of LA Fire Department. The two departments, the two boards need to get together and resolve what is a protected tree. And if it's cumulative, four inches in diameter is protected. Cumulative means if you have four stems of one inch diameter each, which is common with the black walnut, it's a protected tree. Whereas the Fire Department Brush Clearance Division says, no, it's brush and should be cleared. So there's a basic problem between Department Public Works and the Fire Department. So please get it resolved somehow as to what are we protecting? Because we have a lot of brush, which is black walnut in Northeast LA and especially in El Serena 90032. And we're complaining about the brush, but there's no effective way of cleaning it. And a lot of black walnuts are being removed as part of brush clearance without permits. So it's confusing between the two departments, two boards. And it means that things aren't getting cleared and/or they are clearing the walnuts that we have left and that have been cleared several times before, and they stump sprout. And the Protected Tree Ordinance says cumulative four inches. Cumulative means four stems of one inch each equals a protected tree. But that's not being applied by the Fire Department. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. President Garcia, that clears the queue for General Public Comment.
And public comments now officially closed. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for Wednesday, May 25, 2022. Is there a second to my motion to move this item forward?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Corzan. Dr. Campos is the first by me and a second by Commissioner Corzan to move the approval of the minutes forward and forthwith.
Absolutely. We'll start the voting tabulation now. We'll start with you, President Garcia.
Aye.
Vice President Vegas.
Aye.
President Protem Davis.
Davis, aye.
Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
The motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Campos. Moving on to item number one on today's agenda. This is a request from the Bureau of Sanitation in Council District Seven. This is a memorandum of understanding, MOU, Discovery Cube Los Angeles, California Natural Resource Agency grant, recommending the board to, one, approve and forward this report with transmittals to the city council and mayor with the recommendation that the city council, subject to concurrence of the mayor, authorizing the Director of Bureau Sanitation to negotiate and execute an MOU with Discovery Cube Los Angeles as grantee and pass-through entity for California Natural Resources Agency state-specified grant for Discovery Cube Los Angeles. The term of this MOU will be three years with a total cost ceiling of 2.6 million, pursuant to be approved by Council File Number 22-0141, March 11, 2022, which authorizes the Director of Bureau Sanitation or designate me to relatively to the disposition of the affirmation state-specified grant to a negotiate and execute a grant agreement with the state, with the California Natural Resources Agency to administer the state. I'm so sorry, you guys. There's a delivery. Okay. Which, uh, sorry, and submit our documents including the project information package to CNRA. I'm so sorry. It's not my fault. We can hang on for just a second. Okay. All right, FedEx. FedEx fault, you guys. Came at this time. A project, submit our documents including the project information package to the CNRA. B, establish a separate interest-bearing fund and accept and disburse the grant funds in the amount of $2,600,000. C, negotiate and execute a contract or contract amendment with the Discovery Cube Los Angeles in accordance with the terms substantially similar to those set forth in the affirmations, oh my God, grant agreement. Two, execute the MOU upon the mayor's authorization. And three, return the executed MOU to the Bureau Sanitation for further processing. Sorry, I'm even sweating of how my dogs are barking in the background and I can't tell them anything. Thank you for bearing with me on that. All right, Ms. Profit and Ms. Lewis, you're here. And I take it Ms. Fong, you are here for this item. It's all on you now. I get to put myself on you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Naisha Lewis. I am the Project Manager for Discovery Cube LA MOUs with LA Sanitation and Environment. And I'm here with Peru, who's a part of our Central Grants Unit, Central Grants Division, and then also Kami Fong from the City Administrative Office. And I'm going to hand it over to Kami to give you a brief overview of where we started with this project.
Great. Thank you, Naisha. Good morning. My name is Camilla Fong from the Office of the CAO. The item before you pertains to state-specified grants awarded under the 2021-22 State Budget Process or California Comeback Plan, more commonly referred to as earmark grants. Both the federal government and the state of California has recently brought them back as an additional component of the budget process. As you may know, the city solicits and receives earmark grants for its own projects. In this instance, the city is serving as the designated grantee and pass-through administrator on behalf of several nonprofit organizations, of which the Discovery Cube of Los Angeles is one. The city does not receive any portion of these funds. All of the grant funds are passed through to the nonprofit organization. It is the hope that by serving in this capacity, the city will create goodwill for future earmark grants for city projects. Additionally, since the source of funding is our state general funds, this allows for more flexibility in project timelines, performance period, funds dispersment, as well as reporting requirements. LA Sanitation has done an excellent job in executing the grant agreement with the California Natural Resources Agency and also in developing the MOU document with Discovery Cube Los Angeles. Thank you.
Hello. And so in regards to the MOU with Discovery Cube LA, the grant funds will be used for staff labor, miscellaneous operational costs, debt repayment, and exhibit maintenance and construction cost. Again, as was mentioned, it's a 2.6 million ceiling. What we've coordinated with CNRA and along with DCLA is that we will do an advance payment of 1 million to DCLA once the funds are received by the CNRA. After that, after the first advancement, once they submit all the documentation for the use of that first million, we'll then submit a second advance for them for the second 2 million. And then there's two other payments scheduled, and the last payment will be at the completion of the project. And I think that's about it. If you have any questions, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Naisha, for that. And Ms. Fong, so good to meet you. And we've had so many meetings, and this is the first time I actually get to meet you. So I hope to meet you in person one day, soon. Thank you for that. All right, colleagues, any questions on this item?
Yeah, I want to, can you hear me, Madam President?
Yes, Dr. Davis, go ahead.
I wanted to ask, in terms of the grant that we're getting from the state, you said that these are called what kinds of grants again?
They're known as, well, they've been renaming them as state-specified grants, but they were commonly referred to prior to bringing them back as earmark grants.
That's what I thought. So similar to what we do in Congress in terms of their earmarks, a similar process. Is that pretty accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And how much did we again get allotted for this particular project?
2.6 million.
Okay, great. And this will allow us to be able to utilize it in two phases. You're going to advance half of it, approximately half, 1 million. And then I guess after we have expended it, you will then release an additional million. Is that correct? Once the grant comes from Sacramento or? Explain that to me, please.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. Also, in terms of other grants, the grants are available for other projects as well. Is that pretty accurate? Or is this the only one that we've been fortunate to get thus far?
Uh, we've received, oh, sorry. We've received other grants. These are the, um, these are different in that we're serving as a pass-through administrator. We're not the actual final recipient of these grant funds. It's really for the benefit of these nonprofit organizations. However, the city does solicit and pursue earmark grants for their own projects as well. And that's a direct grant agreement with the funding agency to implement our own city projects.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any other questions, colleagues? So I'll just put this into context also for us to know. There is a line here that says that we are delegating our authority, I mean, I think it's on approved item number one, where we are delegating, authorizing the Director of Bureau Sanitation to negotiate and execute the MOU. Just to put this into context, this is a grant that we are not, we didn't apply for, the city did not apply for. It's an earmark given by the federal government to the state. The state is then passing it through us so that we can give it to the nonprofit Discovery Cube. Bureau Sanitation does not have any, and then please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Profit, in the hood, any like work to do, no expectations, other than, I'm going to say it very bluntly, cutting a check, right? That's what we're doing. No? There's more to it. Okay, explain to me what we're doing there.
We do bear the administrative burden in that, right? We are arranging the grant agreement. We do have to review all the documentation that's being provided by Discovery Cube LA to make sure that it's inherent, it's adhering to all the grant requirements. So, so we do have that administrative burden, but we do not get reimbursed. The entire 2.6 million will pass through to DCLA, and the city has accepted this, uh, this administrative burden at no cost, at no reimbursement.
Ms. Fong, just talk about that. Yeah, I knew about that too. But, um, so take me, so what I'm, I guess administrative, but programmatically and outcomes, we sanitation are, and we, the Board of Public Works, none of us are expected to meet any certain outcome or, okay, got it.
That is correct. That's correct.
Got it, to make sure. And then this is what, normally, I'm not okay with delegating any type of authority when it comes to any type of MOUs or any type of contracts. I want to make sure that we keep that at our level here at the board. However, since this is a pass-through grant, I think it's only, I am, it's, it only makes sense for sanitation to have the authority to change and negotiate since we're only doing administrative pass-through on this. So, so I'm comfortable with this the way it is, and I'm happy that we're able to serve and help Discovery Cube get their funds and be able to function. So no problem. I know that we have a longstanding relationship with Discovery Cube. Bureau Sanitation has an exhibit there. By the way, if you've never seen it, it's a pretty cool exhibit. Go, go, because it actually explains our recyclables and all of that happens. And I hope we can do more of that around the city, but I'm really excited about Discovery Cube and what it plays here in the Northeast Valley. And I'm very familiar with it, too. So I don't have a, I'm very comfortable with this, knowing that it's a pass-through grant, and we will be just basically the intermediate between the state and Discovery Cube. All right. Um, I don't hear any other questions, any objections, colleagues, to this?
No objections.
Got it. Okay, is there a motion on the table to move item number one forward and forthwith?
I move.
So move.
It's okay. I'll take Commissioner Reyes as first, and I'll take a second by Dr. Davis. Dr. Campos, we have a first by Commissioner Reyes and a second by Dr. Davis to move item number one forward and forthwith.
We'll start the voting tabulation, and we'll start with you, President Garcia.
Aye.
Vice President Vegas.
Aye.
President Protem Davis.
Davis, aye.
Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time. And Ms. Fong, it was great meeting you. And thank you. Look forward to this project, and I'm excited about some exhibit. Maybe there's a new exhibit. I don't know. It'd be nice to see. Thank you. Have a good rest of the week. All right, colleagues, moving on to item number two. This is in Council District 15. This is a revocable permit encroachment in the public right-of-way Green Meadows Community Group, Council District 15. I know we have a caller, but I'll do the reading of the entered into the record, and then Mr. Valito do the presentation, and then we can take our caller. So recommending the board to, one, authorize the community of beautification to grant revocable permission to encroach within the public right-of-way, subject to listed conditions. Two, the Green Meadows Community Group encroachment installation of a stone monument welcome sign on the area of the median strip that lies within the city of Los Angeles boundary and Sepulveda Boulevard, immediately west of Normandy Avenue in Council District 15. Two, authorize the city engineer to issue a no-fee revocable permit for work to be performed. And three, authorize the city engineer to issue a no-fee permit, a permit for work to be performed. And four, authorize the Office of Community Beautification to request the Bureau of Contract Administration to provide a no-fee inspection of the project. And we have Mr. Valito. Mr. Valito, I'm going to have you do the presentation, and then we'll take our caller after that. Go ahead, Mr. Valito.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Good morning, President Garcia, Commissioners, and Mr. Executive Officer, Yuri Valido, Assistant Director of the Office of Community Beautification. First off, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Reyes. It's, uh, it's been a long time. I don't know if you remember me or not, but it's great to see you here. For the benefit of Commissioner Reyes, since this is the first adopted median project that he'll be voting on, I'd like to offer a very brief background on the Adopt a Median Program. Adopt a Median is a program run by the Office of Community Beautification. Our program facilitates the process of reviewing, approving, and permitting proposals to install community beautification projects and community improvement projects in the public right-of-way. OCB is the conduit between the constituent group and the reviewing agencies. And typically, these projects are reviewed by Streets LA and the Bureau of Engineering to ensure that the proposal complies with relevant city ordinances and guidelines. Occasionally, other departments may be involved in the review process. The constituent group agrees to maintain the project in perpetuity. And upon adoption of the project by the board, the Bureau of Engineering waives the fees for the project's a permit and revocable permit. The particular project I'm presenting today is one that the Office of Councilmember Buscaino has been diligently working on for the past several months. A "Welcome to Harbor City" sign has been the goal of the Harbor City Green Meadows Community members, primarily Mr. Oliver Reed and Mr. Tom Houston for many years. A local businessman has come forward and is willing to pay for the sign and its installation. The Green Meadows Community Group has agreed to maintain the improvement and the installation site. The stone monument is to be installed on the median strip within the city of Los Angeles boundary on Sepulveda Boulevard, immediately west of Normandy Avenue in Council District 15. The installation will be performed by a private contractor, Dave's Signs, with the goal of completing the installation within six to eight months, once the permits are received. The Adopt a Median Project Plan has been reviewed and approved by the Bureau of Engineering and the Department of Transportation. The Green Meadows Community Group shall adhere to the conditions as provided in the approval. And at this time, I would like to request that the board adopt this project so that we may move forward to the permitting phase of the process. And as stated earlier, we do have a representative from CD 15 in attendance today to speak on behalf of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Valito. Mr., Council District 15, if you're ready, we can take your call now. Okay.
Caitlin.
Caitlin, aye.
Went ahead and added you as a panelist. I'm going to go ahead and just spotlight you for the audience, and thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you taking my call after the presentation. I just wanted you to have a little bit of background on how long this project has been coming to a head. And actually, before we got in connection with Adopt a Median, we actually have been trying to get this made for close to 10 years. The community is very adamant on it. They had a project in place, and it fell through about almost 10 years ago. So this is something that we've been trying to get through since then. The community members met with the business owner, and they've just come to an agreement that they would install it, and they would also maintain it, and if something happens, so they would replace it. And our office is in favor of it, just for the fact that Harbor City has been trying to create a sense of identity. And this is one step closer to doing that. So thank you for letting me finish my spiel, and I hope everyone's having a great one.
Thank you, Caitlin, for that, and thank you for being here with us. Dr. Campos, was this our only caller?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that. All right, colleagues, any questions for Mr. Valito on item number two?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay, Dr. Davis.
Could you describe for me some of the tasks that will be performed in helping to maintain the median?
Dr. Davis, typically, with median signs such as this, fortunately, there isn't going to be a bunch of maintenance that needs to be done. I do not believe there's going to be any landscaping or any kind of plants being installed. It's essentially just the stone monument. So obviously, if there's any kind of vandalism, graffiti and the such, you know, OCB will, will be there to assist with that. Obviously, if the sign is damaged in any way via, you know, vandals or a traffic accident or something of that sort, the group will, you know, take it upon themselves to, to do any repairs that are necessary. But as I said before, typically with, with sign installations and just the installations of the signs, there isn't a whole lot of maintenance that needs to be done, that people will be looking out for. The Green Meadows Community will be on top of that maintenance and will be able to address anything that happens.
Let me ask, is there any potential for improvement of the median? I don't know the physical structure of the median, but is there a physical space in which we could potentially add plants or something to enhance a medium space, if in fact there is one?
As I recall, from the sky view photos that were submitted, it's a concrete median, so there, there is no dirt. So anything that needed to be installed in the median, they'd have to break concrete and actually, you know, create a space for it. So right now, there would, that would not be possible unless in the future something comes to pass where they actually want to break the concrete and open it up for something like that.
Well, hopefully, as we began to give some thought what we're doing, if in fact there is a future of our work in this area, I would love for us to expand our potential thinking and the potential innovation that could occur in places like, this is a public housing development. Is that correct?
No, sir. This is, uh, it's a, it's a street median on Sepulveda Boulevard. It's, and again, I have.
It's on Sepulveda.
Uh, yes.
And this is, is this a 15 councilmatic district?
Yes, Council District 15.
15, correct. Okay, so I would like for us to, if in the future, we might potentially have some opportunity to look at ways in which we could even further develop medians like this in this area. And I do understand you to say that this is basically just a cement area. But food for thought, I think, I love what we're doing in terms of the idea of helping to improve the area and give it some potential areas of identification by the things that we do. And I would love for us to consider areas where we can expand and put plants in certain places that we consider doing that moving forward, should there be such an opportunity.
Yes, sir. Yes, that would be great. And, uh, you know, the Adopt a Median Program is, is here to help facilitate those projects should a community group want to undertake that, and we're, we're always here to help them out with that.
And let me ask you, are there any trees in that area?
As I recall, um, on the median itself, no. I, I believe there are some trees on the sidewalks. It's in a, uh, kind of a business area. There's a shopping mall across the street. So I'm sure there are some trees in the area right now, yes.
I can speak on that. Sorry to interrupt. There is, um, there are trees on both sides.
I'm sorry, who, is this Caitlin? Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So there are, there are trees on both sides of Sepulveda. We are actually working with LA Sanitation with the City Plants Program, and we are implementing even more trees. I just had that walk-in meeting last week. They will be implementing, I believe, eight to 10 more trees with tree wells and replacing any of the ones that have passed away just from lack of water. We also have a plan in place to water them for the next three years, so then that way they can really take root and thrive. So that is something that we are working on, on that corridor, because it is residential on one side and business on the other. So we're trying to make it a happy medium with both, with trees and things like that.
Thank you very, because that was particularly what I was leading to. And I appreciate the collaboration that we're doing with the people who help plant trees as well. And I think to help improve these areas can really be a plus to what we're doing in utilizing the service. These areas like this, I think, are just prime examples of how we can improve the quality of life around these kinds of things. And I'm very glad to see that you are moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Commissioner Corzan.
Uh, thank you. Thanks, Caitlin, for joining us today. It's good to see you again. I do have a question. I have no problem with this median adoption. I think it's fantastic, and we should do more of it. I do have fundamental questions about how we do median adoptions. My understanding is if one is overgrown and contacts 311, it's referred to the, I don't even know how to describe the response I got. So I just want to know what the accountability is, and not necessarily with, with this partner, but other partners who we reach agreements to adopt medians with, and they're never maintained, and they're overgrown. I see it all the time on Ventura Boulevard. Um, and they're overgrown. I see it all the time on Ventura Boulevard. Um, and but the signs, like, for example, for the one I'm thinking of, the sign is always maintained, but the median itself is never maintained, and it's overgrown. So uh wh- what do we do in terms of accountability when it comes to that?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. Um. It's it's kind of a uh involved response, so I'll be as brief as I can about it. When a constituent group uh undertakes an adopted median project, they uh sign a maintenance agreement to maintain the project and the project site in perpetuity. So for instance, if a group decides to um install a community sign on a median and they decide to plant some flowers around that sign, uh, they're responsible for maintaining the the flowers that they planted and the sign that they had installed. The rest of the median, however, uh if it has uh other uh vegetation that they did not plant, um, they are not responsible for maintain- maintaining that because it was not part of their installed project. Um, not to speak uh on behalf of the Bureau of Street Services, but I I do know that uh they have had um issue or issues with maintaining certain medians in the city due to staffing and budget and other things like that. Um, so if you do have medians uh in mind that uh are not being maintained, um, please feel free to send a list, and I'll go through that list to see if they are actually adopted medians. Um, the thing about our program is that I'm I'm essentially the adopted median program. It's it's a one-man show right now. Um, I have asked several times the past few years for staff, so that I could send people out to assist me with uh inspections of uh the medians in the city that have been adopted in the past and that are not being maintained, because yes, th- there are such uh locations that are not being maintained. And in those instances, if an adopted median uh project has not been maintained, uh it should be reverted back to its original state. Uh, and and uh tha- that is just something that currently we don't have the the manpower to do uh as far as conducting those types of inspections and follow-ups throughout the city.
I I appreciate that. I'm I'm not looking for uh special status as a commissioner or someone who knows someone in the city. Uh, I I I'm just expressing to you the frustration I felt having reported overgrown medians on three one one and getting a response that it's a third party and just seeing it continue to grow. And generally speaking, I'm having the same issue from a pothole uh that I referred before I became a commissioner. And I I just like to see that, uh, you know, whenever we have these third-party situations, that it's not within one of the bureaus. But it is something that we ask people to report on three one one, that we provide some clarity when we respond on three one one. Or we find ways to solve it rather than letting them just uh stagnate, because then, you know, stakeholders are just that he doesn't do anything. And I think that's a big, big issue. But um I think that's a conversation for another day, but thank you.
Yes, sir. No, I I understand completely your frustration. And again, I I uh invite you to please, um, if you have any questions or you want to send me a list, I will do my best to follow up on those locations for you and uh see what I can get done.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Corson. I am, any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none. I I think a good point, Commissioner Corson, on on the maintenance of the medians, we're always looking forward to that. And uh perhaps Mr. Valero, um, let's, let's try to work off offline to see what we can do on that aspect. Maybe an intern, maybe council offices, maybe we send a general email to all all of those that should be taken care of it, like a reminder, go back out there. I don't know, let's, let's work offline to see what we can do to uh at least pick up some of this uh maintenance during uh all throughout the city. So on this, not just this one, but just in general.
Yes, ma'am, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, uh, are there any objections on this item? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move item number two forward and forthwith? So move.
Uh, so.
That I'll take one for a doctor, I'll take one uh by Vice President Villegas and a second by Dr. Davis. Dr. Campos, we have a first by VP Villegas and a second by Dr. Davis to move item number two forward and forthwith.
Yes, let's go ahead and start the voting tabulation. We'll start with you, uh, Madam President.
Hi.
Vice President Villagas.
Hi.
President Protem Davis.
Davis, aye.
Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Valero, and thank you, Caitlin, for being here this morning and look forward to seeing this um, this I median get get uh upgraded, right?
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, please, we always enjoy that. Thank you very much. Have a good rest of the week.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, moving on to item number three. This is um an A F E for Ara Killian. I'm pr- I'm definitely chopping that one up. Ara Killian, uh, Mr. Milo, uh, hopefully you can say it better than I can. And Mr. Reese, how are you? Uh, this is an A F E for Ara Killian Enterprises, Inc. Bureau Sanitation and Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution of an authority for expenditure in the amount of nine million dollars to encumber funds to process approximately four hundred and twenty tons per day of blue bin residential curb site recyclables collected from East and West Valley from July first, two thousand twenty four, twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Authorize the president or two members of the Board of Public Works to execute this service agreement. And we have Mr. Reese and Mr. Milo here from the Bureau of Sanitation on today's item. Okay, good morning, sir. How are you, sirs?
Good morning.
Now, good morning, President Garcia, uh Vice President Villagas, Commissioner Davies, Commissioner Corson, Commissioner Reyes, our executive officer, Dr. Campos, and our seat attorney Ted Jordan. My name is Ron Milo. I'm the program manager for the residential residential Blue Bean Program from Solid Resources Support Services Division, L A Sanitation and Environment. I have, I have also with me today Martin Ruiz, our project manager for the Blue Bean Program, and our executive team, Robert Potter, our division manager, and Alex Hilo, our assistant director. I am here today to request authority for expenditure with A E number two three five zero four two six M for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to encumber nine million using the Solid Waste Resources Fund to pay Ara Killian Enterprises Incorporated, otherwise known as Athens, for the services on the processing and marketing of residential blue bin materials collected from West Valley and East Valley Waysheds. The term of this uh authority for expenditure or A E will be from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirty, twenty twenty-three. On a related note, L A San and Athens are currently on another L O A with the same scope of services and and work under A E two two five zero eight one seven nine M, amounting to nine million. That will expire on June thirty of this year. Both A Es have no impact to the general fund. L A San beat a request for propulsion, R F P, for the processing and marketing of residential blue bin materials in early twenty twenty, wherein L A San evaluated, selected, and executed a contract last year with C R N R to receive, process, and market the blue bin materials from West L A, North Central, South L A, and Harbor Waysheds. Although the R F P for the all waste, for all our waysheds, L A San is still negotiating with Athens for the East Valley and West Valley. L A San wanted to move with uninterrupted and essential blue bin collection services and are thus establishing another L O A and A F E with Athens for a temporary basis while their proposal for a long-term contract is currently in negotiation. Athens operates a material recovery facility, otherwise known as M R F, in San Valley, located adjacent to L A San's East Valley District Collection Yard. Athens has agreed to process and market blue bin collected materials approximately four hundred ten to four hundred twenty tons per day. In closing, as I mentioned earlier, I'm here to request the board to approve the authority for expenditure in the amount of nine million to pay Athens services in processing and marketing of our recyclables for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Milo, for that uh information. Just to make it clear, thi- to get it clear on my end, this is a one-year, pretty much agreement, and while you're working for the, a more permanent agreement, right?
That's correct, President Garcia.
Okay. All right, colleagues, any questions on this item? Vice President Villagas.
Thank you. Um, you might have gone over this, but I just don't see a report. Um, how did you come up with the um financing, the budget?
Uh, the, the, the budget start, uh, the, the, the budget starts at seventy dollars per ton. So that would be the uh processing unit cost. And then there will be some uh value for the fibers wherein we we've, we apply for a calculation. And then it comes out with the, with the, multiply that with the tonnage, and we come out with uh uh about eight million and then adding a certain percentage. That's why we come up with the nine million.
So you might uh add something just to clarify, uh, Ron. I didn't know. Okay, add the M R chargers.
I think you have a heck now.
You're echoing, aren't you? Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campos. Can you hear me? Okay, so the M R chargers, you know, for, to process a a ton of materials that we deliver. And they, they charge us seventy dollars per ton. Uh, we have a formula that will allow us to uh share a profit of the O C C or carbon. And the formula is we pay the highest value of the O C C uh plus the lowest value of the S S C, we divide it by two. And that is a profit cherry, that profit cherry that Athens is, is uh giving us. So the M R, say, for example, that charges seventy dollars per ton, and we have profit cherry for the O C C or ten dollars per ton. We ended up paying only sixty dollars per ton because we have a profit cherry. So that's an addition to what Ron was saying. You know, and that's how we count with the budget. And right now, the, you know, for the last fiscal year is about, you know, a uh for every invoice, they invoice us about maybe um six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. And we recycle about, you know, four hundred tons for the East and for West Valley. And that's the six hundred or seven hundred dollars is between, and this for both uh waysheds for East and West Valley, too.
Okay, and um I guess I'm, I I have more questions. I can probably ask them offline. I just um would have wanted a little bit more background. Um, uh, Arakalian is Athens, essentially. Is that what you're saying? And where, where they were not doing any of this work in the past?
Yes, they've been, they've been uh in a good contract with the C P for the past.
I know that. I know that, yeah. But what is different from the current contract that we have with them to do this work and this A F E?
It's the same scope of services and work, Commissioner Villagas. So this is just a con- uh, this is a, this is a, just a continuation of the service we have while we are in negotiation with a long-term contract. So.
Ron, let me, I'm sorry, Ron. This is Alex Hello, Assistant General Manager of Sanitation. Com- Commissioner Villagas, we released an R F P request for proposals. We got basically like three, four vendors who applied. For the value, we really had only Athens. So we negotiated for the South Division with C R N R and potential. For the value, we began negotiating with Athens. As we negotiated, you know, um, during the negotiation, it became clear we do need an interim agreement while we're discussing the details, because the agreement we had with C R N R and is revenue generating. We're getting a better rates and more value for our commodities, the one that Martin was speaking about. So we've been doing very hard negotiations with Athens. So, but in the meantime, we're getting four hundred and twenty-five tons a day of material that's keep being collected. While we are trying to push hard for a good deal for the city and negotiate a better agreement, we settled on this rate, where we're taking only the commodity, which is the fiber, which represents about fifty percent or so of what we're collecting. So our goal is to finalize a deal with Athens that we can come to the board that is more favorable to the city. In the meantime, we are, we're, we're going with this uh temporary agreement. This agreement could end anytime. We have a permanent agreement. So this is a stopgap. It's a year, but we can get out of it anytime we have the permanent agreement with Athens approved by the Board of Public Works.
And just for a little more foundation on, on that, um, in two thousand sixteen, China put in the, the green.
Mr. Potter, is that you?
Yes, it's me.
That, uh, before everybody just interrupts.
Sorry about that.
But, you know, please, uh, either raise your hand or let us know there's a, like, a process to it. Okay, Mr. Potter, go ahead.
So to Commissioner Villagas's comment, that originally we had contracts that were revenue generating. Alex alluded to that. China in uh put in the China sword and the green fence and, and uh the vendor that we had in the valley could no longer do business. It was no longer feasible for them to continue the contracts with us, which led to this R F P that has led to these LOAs. And and Alex was a hundred percent accurate. We anticipate that when we're done finalizing the negotiations with Athens, that we'll have a better deal than what we have now.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thank you for the background. I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you, Vice President Villagas. Uh, Commissioner Reyes.
Um, my questions were answered. Uh, thank you, VP Villagas, for asking the same questions and concerns that I have. Um, and I just, I just want to have a a general comment that um who I would have appreciated a little bit more um breakdown of the information um to give it more context. Because I I do understand, you know, the importance of an interim contract leading to a more uh palatable, um, you know, contract in the long term. Um, and because this is important, this is the valley. Um, for us, um, you know, the tonnage is higher. Um, a- and therefore that uh diversion rate and all of that is very important. Um, just that information, if we could do that um in all of our contracts to give us um a a a breakdown so that we could uh better understand um what the specifics are and really how the um, the contract is gonna work for the interest of our residents. Um, so I would have appreciated that. Thank you so much.
Ms. Commissioner Reyes, do you want to, are you comfortable with this, or do, would you want to have a a briefing? We can always continue the item for a week or two weeks.
I, I know, I I'm, I'm very comfortable. I'm comfortable with it. It's just that I know of the essence of it, but it wasn't really explained, and that's why I appreciated uh um VP Villagas asking that question. Uh, it should really be, we have to be transparent. Um, and, you know, pop up as a public-facing agency, um, always to do that um as part of our um best practice. Uh, that's what I would just say.
Okay, agreed. Thank you. Uh, uh, very much so. So let me ask a question, um, and whoever answered. So since this is starting July first, twenty twenty-two, has Athens been doing the work this past year?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, yes, President Garcia, as I mentioned in my uh uh report earlier, there is an existing L O A. Uh, uh, A E two two five zero eight one seven nine, amounting to the same uh dollar amount, which is nine million. And this will expire by June thirty of this year.
Okay, how long have we had this year-to-year contract with Athens or agreements with Athens?
We started the twenty twenty twenty. And then uh since after the R F P, we have to continue the, the, the services, so that's why we came out with it, with this L O A. And now that we have the, the proposed contract of Athens, we are in the process of negotiating with them. And hopefully, the plat- the, the goal is to have the long-term contract be uh executed within this year.
Uh, okay, I agree. And we've been negotiating for two years? Is that what I'm hearing?
We've been, yes, Commissioner, yes, President Garcia. And right now, because of some issues on the, 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 the price of other commodities. Because in the past, they are only considering the fiber materials. Now we have to consider the other materials to include the glass, the plastics and things like that. That's why we, we come out with a different pricing with Athens.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, colleagues? Any objections? Is there a motion to move this item forward?
No move.
Thank you. I'll take it first by Commissioner Reyes and a second by Commissioner Corson to move item number three forward and forthwith.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and start the voting tabulation. We'll start with you, President Garcia.
I.
Vice President Villegas.
I.
President Protem Davis. Dr. Davis, you're on mute, but I see you on video.
Yeah.
Okay, Davis, hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Corzan. And Commissioner Reyes.
Hi.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos. I, just for the record, if you want to speak, please raise your virtual hand. It's always really important to do that because we interrupt one another or it's really hard to know who's speaking. So in the future, please just raise your hand and I'll make sure to call you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milo, Mr. Bees, Mr. Helio and Mr. Potter for your time this morning. Have a good rest of the week.
Thank you, President Garcia.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, moving on to item number four. This is an AFE for the YMCA Metropolitan of Los Angeles. This is a Bureau of Sanitation and Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution of an authority for expenditure in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to encumber funding to pay for utilization rental of various hygiene facilities for unsheltered residents from August 15th, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Authorize the president or two members of the Board of Public Works to execute this service agreement. And we have Mr. Potter here on this item?
That is correct. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
I'm wonderful. Good, good morning, President Garcia, Commissioners Villegas, Davis, Corzan and Reyes. Executive Officers, City Attorney and Bureau Representatives. I'm Robert Potter, the Division Manager of Resolute Resource Support Service Division with LA SAN and Environment. LA SAN is requesting authorization of an authority for expenditure AE22100212M and a letter of agreement with YMCA for the utilization of no less than seven facilities to be available to unsheltered residents during the period of COVID-19 emergency. And this is for the period of August 15th, 2021 through June 30th of 2022. The County Department of Health and Centers for Disease Controls have provided guidelines for basic hygiene practices, which include our vulnerable unsheltered residents. With the, this will supplement the eight mobile hygiene units that LA SAN currently deploys for unsheltered residents. The YMCA has agreed for LA SAN to utilize the showers, bathrooms and locker rooms of seven YMCA facilities. East Valley YMCA, Hollywood YMCA, Stewart M. Ketchum Downtown YMCA, Mid Valley YMCA, Weingart YMCA Wellness and Aquatic Center and the Wilmington YMCA and the West Valley Family YMCA. LA SAN inspected these facilities prior to the use and LA SAN will repair any damage caused to the facility during use. The return and return of the facility in a safe and clean condition comparable when LA SAN began utilizing the facilities. Participants utilizing the facilities will have to sign release waivers against the YMCA and the city as well as agree to program rules. Participants' temperatures and conditions will be screened such that temperatures over a hundred point four degrees Fahrenheit or having symptoms of COVID will not be allowed to participate. This program has provided eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four showers since its inception of the program. And during the period of this LOA, from August 15th, 2021 to June 6th, there have been eleven thousand, one hundred and ten showers made available to our unsheltered Angelinas. LA SAN will pay YMCA three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars per week, per branch, no less than seven branches weekly. Payment is due in advance at the beginning of each month. Funding of this agreement is in the amount of one point two five zero million is available in the Fund 100, Department 82, Object 304. And it's generally funded from the COVID Relief Funds provided to the City of Los Angeles. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Potter, for that. Any questions, colleagues? Miss, I don't see or hear none. Mr. Potter, what are, what is the plan for the summer? The summer is coming and kids are coming back. Are they, I imagine kids are now using YMCAs again. Can you tell me what the plan is for the summer?
So we haven't had, the YMCA hasn't reached out about continuing the contract beyond the June 30th date. But there is money allocated in the HAP Section 2 for that funding that's available to us. It's about seven hundred and seventy-five million, seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's been set aside for that. If we were to execute an additional year with the seven sites with the YMCA, it would require about one point four million. So there is a little bit of a gap there that we would have to make up. So we're waiting for the YMCA or, or the mayor's office to reach out to see where the, the, you know, next year is headed.
Okay, and this year, given that July is next month and kids will be on vacation, what is a programmatic plan for us having hygiene showers in a YMCA while the kids are, you know, is that an issue? Is that something you guys worked out? How is that going to still, will be able to service the kids that are coming to YMCA and still have our hygiene showers?
So in this whole process, originally it was, it was simple because the Y was only providing showers during COVID because the facilities were closed. When the facilities reopened, YMCA made the necessary safety adjustments to allow the two programs to work harmoniously. So there was an access area for the homeless to be able to utilize the showers and it was dedicated. And then the facilities were also open to, to the, the, the members. And that's always been on YMCA to coordinate that to ensure that they can meet it. And if they can't, they would, you know, I believe they would reach out to us and say that they can no longer provide the services because of the high demand from their facilities.
Okay, that sounds fair. Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, in terms of us implementing this program in collaboration with the Y, how long have we been doing this shower program?
So the original shower program started in, I think it was April 15th of 2020, when the pandemic, the COVID orders were given, when was, is when we started reaching out. That was the starting point of it.
Okay, and we have had success in most of the areas where we provide the service in the seven facilities that we are able to rent from the YMCA during those periods of time. Have we seen consistent participation of homeless individuals in the various areas of the city that are feeding into these centers that we are contracting with?
Okay, so there's a consistency, but there's been a reduction in the need, I think. So to be transparent. The original, when, when it was the, the, you know, 2020, when this all started, there was a high volume of, of utilization. I think as the orders have dropped off and the, the stay-at-home orders have been reduced and that things are coming back online. We're probably not seeing the volume that we did back in 2020, but there is a consistent use of the facilities.
The volume, though, if we measure it, is not because there is a lack of homeless individuals that are available to use the services. It's because of our ability to be able to obtain those individuals. It's a programmatic issue versus an issue based upon a homeless population because on one hand, we are seeing a consistent flow of homeless individuals, correct?
There, there are homeless that use these locations. I think there's a combination of things, Dr. Davis. We, when we first started the, the YMCA program, we didn't have the same number of mobile hygiene units also. So, so LA Sanitation has implemented, you know, eight mobile hygiene units that are targeting areas, you know, through our, you know, our understanding of where, where the homeless population is that needs those services. So some of those services have now been augmented by our, our MHU units.
I see. So then you would conclude that these services are still given our homeless population. These services that we are beginning to support here are still critically needed. The collaboration we have with the Y is still a very important program that we can use. Question?
I, I would conclude that, yes. I would conclude that any services that we are able to provide to our unsheltered community to, in order to keep them safe is, is vital services that should be provided.
You mentioned in your, in your presentation that if an individual is found to have been impacted by COVID, then obviously they can't come into the Y operation and then further spread it. But then, once they are identified as a person who's impacted with COVID, then what do we do? Do you know?
I, off the top of my head, I don't because that's a, the YMCA would just be not rendering the services based on a criteria they set. I'm sure they can probably refer them to, you know, a medical facility that, that could check it out. And just because they have a temperature doesn't necessarily mean they have COVID, right? But that would be something they'd need to check out.
So there is a referral, the Y staff is the one that manes the program, is that right?
That is correct.
And so then they would be responsible for referring individuals to appropriate services at that point in time, right?
I would say that they would, yeah, I would say that they would not allow them to use the services that are in this contract and then would, would hopefully turn them to somebody that would take care of them. But I don't know that to be true.
Okay, so, but what we do know is that the city is not responsible for the referral.
That's correct.
The, the, the Y would be responsible for the referral. Well, it would be helpful to make sure that they know the importance of a referral. Not that, you know, you have to do everything in the world. But I think, you know, in as much as this is a health crisis, that little loophole can be critically important to make sure that the, even though it's not our direct responsibility, that when they come through a program for which we have provided some kind of funding, that we know that those people who have a health challenge in this circumstance are appropriately referred to health authorities in which to better assess it appropriately. So that was a concern I had.
I totally agree with you and I will follow up on that post this meeting with a conversation with the YMCA to make sure that there is some process.
Thank you so much and I appreciate the work that we're doing. And you also mentioned finally, that is it, did you say Measure HH had some funding moving forward to help us to implement this program perhaps? Or did I not hear that?
No, you're correct. It was, it was an item in the HHAP dash two, item nine. It approved seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars for funding for outreach, public and hygiene for sanitation when dealing with the setting up of a contract with YMCA. So it's allocated in there.
Oh, great. So thank you for that. Certainly I support this program. I appreciate the collaboration that we're doing. For many reasons, this is a very Herculean problem that seems to have no end. But our city, which is the epicenter in many ways of it, is also fortunate to have leaders who have the energy, the innovation and the determination to help to solve it. This kind of an innovative program that you're presenting to us today is a reflection of the degree to which we are committed to help to try to better manage this problem. So I support this problem. I mean, this program in terms of what it does to help us, in my opinion, resolve a very complex problem. And as a result of your presentation today, it really has struck a level of interest for me to ask our board and our president for us to get information in terms of the financing of HHH and H in terms of where the money is, what's going on with it, how it impacts our programs. I don't think we've had anybody from H or HHH come to tell us about the program and how it interacts with the various things that we implement. I would be curious to know if it's appropriate at some future time as we support this effort to have a better understanding of how it interacts with our overall vision collectively to try to better manage the homeless problem. So thank you so much for your presentation and hopefully we can get more information that will be supportive of the many programs that come before us to know what's available financially through H and HHH. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. That is an excellent point. And we should probably assess the different fundings that we, the Board of Public Works, the Department of Public Works receives on Measure HHH. This is one of many. Am I correct, Dr. Potter? Dr. Potter, Dr. Mr. Potter, I just gave you
Mine will be Dr.
I, I just, I just got an honorary degree, I think, right there. Yeah, there is, there's many funding sources that come, that come to us for different facets of the homeless programs that we, we help manage.
It'll be ideal if we can get kind of like a, like an overall picture of everything that we're doing on Measure H. It's a good point, Dr. Davis. Let's see, we'll work on that to figure that out and get somebody to start presenting on some of the, on that funding. Vice President Villegas, and then I'll go after you, Commissioner Reyes.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say that I think this is an effort that was, you know, I think Mr. Potter alluded to it, you know, just at the beginning of COVID. And it was started by the mayor's office. And so I appreciate just all your staff's, you know, updates every week on the various YMCA's. But to President Garcia's point, we have at least seven or eight YMCA's that are still taking in folks that can take showers and open up our, our the YMCA's in partnership and just wondering if they're going to keep that or how long that was just going to last. And you may not know that answer now, but just wanted to just emphasize that because it's, these are YMCA's that, you know, have a large, you know, children constituency. I just want to ask that.
So at this point, the LOA that we're putting here in the AE is till the end of the year. The mayor's office has not reached out to us about the continuation. That's usually the trigger is the mayor's office and the YMCA will reach out and we are the, you know, the contract manager for the, the agreement. So at this point, it, it could terminate June 30th if there's not a continuation, but we know that there's money set aside. So we anticipate that conversation shortly. And then we'll be back to the board to, you know, for another iteration of this LOA and, and AE.
Thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Vice President, Commissioner Reyes.
So I, the original intent is really to extend the partnership with YMCA, right? And I'm just wondering, again, I'm going to also piggybacking on the question of Dr. Davis. This is something that our community really needs. And you mentioned that YMCA has not gotten back to us whether they want to continue the program. Is that correct?
So as, as Commissioner Villegas alluded to earlier, is this was driven by the mayor's office. So the conversation is between the mayor's office and the YMCA. And typically LA SAN is the contract manager on this. So we get guidance from the homeless group at the mayor's office on the continuation of the contract. That's what we have had in the past.
And, and we haven't heard that
That has not, that conversation has not happened yet.
Okay, so that, that's kind of concerning because it is, you know, we have homeless kids and, and this contract does not only provide shower facilities, but also locker rooms, you know, storage, that kind of stuff, bathrooms that they need to use. So that's, that's really needed.
This contract only provides the shower services and the locker rooms and bathrooms are tied to that service. So it's not like they have the access to the lockers and the facilities 24/7. It's for
It's only for that?
Only for showering and they have lockers and restroom facilities while they're in the facility taking
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah.
And, okay, so that's one thing that I think we need to find out. The other one is that I, I know that there is, there are one hundred fifty Um, the other one is that I, I know that there is an, there, there are one hundred fifty, uh, portable hygiene stations that are being provided to, uh, more encampments. Um, is that still continuing? Do you have any, um, information about that? Because it's all tied together with the provision of those services.
A, a hundred fifteen, I don't know of the, are you talking about a hundred fifty portable restrooms? Because there's, there's, there's about fourteen elements of that program and most of it's managed by another, uh, by Gabriel Miranda in, in the LSD program. There are, um, restroom facilities that are provided at high density, um, homeless encampment areas or, you know, unhoused areas. Um, we also have mobile hygiene units, which are actual showers that, that are driven to the community. Um, there's, there's, there's a lot of factors, but I wouldn't be the expert on it. Gabriel Miranda, who manages that program, would have most of the data is associated with that.
Okay, I would appreciate a briefing on that so that I have a better understanding of the more comprehensive, um, uh, program that we are offering, um, to, uh, along with, uh, you know, for this homelessness, uh, issue that we have.
I, I will have Gabriel Miranda reach out to you.
Would you please?
Sure, of course.
That's all I have, uh, President Garcia.
Thank you, Commissioner Reyes, for that. Potter, I see that this is, uh, going to expire June thirtieth of 2022. That's in a couple of weeks. Is there a reason why we're so far at, um, so late in the game?
So, the LOA originally, the mayor's office came, uh, came to us with funding that was gonna provide funding for, uh, till, uh, December of, uh, 2021. Then there was more funds that were acquired that got us to March and then there was additional funds that got us through the entire year. So it was piecemealed together. And the advice of, uh, accounting was to have a single LOA that covered the entire period, uh, that was cleaner and then a single, uh, AE rather than three separate AEs for three different time periods. So we consolidated all three into a singular, uh, uh, LOA and an AE so that we could pay it all at once.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, but all, what I'm not still clear is that I'm hearing here, I'm seeing from August fifteenth, twenty-two until June thirtieth, twenty-two. Did you say that this was gonna go on until the end of this year, meaning December twenty-twenty-two?
No, meaning the end of the fiscal year.
Got it.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so it's, I, I, it's concerning that what will happen after June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So, uh, perhaps, uh, when you brief Commissioner Reyes, that, uh, maybe by then you'll have some kind of a plan or, or at least know what the expectation is after, um, June thirtieth. If it's a phase out, then what is the phase out gonna look like? And, or if it's a continuance, what is the continuance gonna look like?
Of course.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and I know, but I know we have to, uh, you know, pay this for this current year that they've already, uh, provided services. Okay, is there a motion? Uh, is there, are there any objections, objections on this item? Hearing none. Is, uh, is there a motion to move this item forward and forthwith?
Promote.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Oh, second. Okay, that's okay. Give it to VP. Thanks, Commissioner. There's a, Dr. Campos, there's a first by Dr. Davis and a second by Vice President Villegas to move item number four forward and forthwith.
Yes, let's go ahead and see the votes at this time. We'll start with you, Madam President.
Aye.
Vice President Villegas.
Aye.
President Protem Davis.
Davis, aye.
Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous.
Great, thank you for that, Dr. Campos. All right, Mr. Potter, this is, uh, we gotta pay them, so let's do it. I'm looking forward to after June thirtieth and the plan of action for that.
Sounds great. Thank you for all your time.
All right, thank you. Have a good rest of the week. All right, colleagues, moving on to item number five. This is in Council District Fourteen. This is an AFE for American Restore Inc. Uh, the Bureau of Sanitation and the Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution of an authority for expenditure in the amount of seven hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred two dollars for installation of a fourteen thousand, four hundred seventy square foot, square foot at an average thickness of one point five dash two inches. Is it, no, it's not, is it inches? Isn't that inches, right? It isn't just, okay, good. I, I'm missing my fifth grade, uh, math here. All right, the inches thickness of, uh, equal floor, four oh four dash two oh two topping system to restore the, and protect the existing tipping floor at Central Los Angeles Recycling and Transfer Station. Authorize the president or two members of the Board of Public Works to execute this service agreement for the term dates of June first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And, um, just before I pass it over to you, Tonya, colleagues, I, I'm seeing there's a lot of AFEs, mostly from sanitation. Uh, and it's not how we mostly like to do our business, but it is the end of the year, so a lot of things will be coming in this way. Uh, not hoping that after June, after July first, we continue to work on AFEs. I prefer reports and motions and all of that. But, um, given that we are getting close to the end of the year, I understand this. So with that, uh, Ms. Flores, uh, welcome. And, but hang on, I believe, hang on, Ms. Flores, I believe we have a caller on the line?
Uh, President Garcia, I did make that statement. However, during general public comment, Mr. or Dr. Williams, uh, rescinded item number five and he prefers to speak on items six and seven.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you for that, um, Dr. Campos. Ms. Flores, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Executive Officer, City Attorney and Bureau Representatives. My name is Tonia Flores and I'm an engineer representing Solid Resources Processing and Construction Division. Who, and we also operate the Central Los Angeles Recycling, uh, Transfer Station, CLARTS for short. Uh, let me see. I have my colleague here, Antronic, he's also will be co-representing this item. So just a quick introduction to CLARTS. It is a solid waste transfer station that is owned and operated by the City of Los Angeles. We currently process over three thousand, two hundred tons per day of municipal solid waste and approximately three hundred tons per day of green waste. Inside the main transfer station, over four hundred collection trucks dump solid waste on a daily basis. And the waste is pretty much dumped on the floor, which is called the tipping floor. The waste is then pushed with, uh, skip loaders with buckets through two ports that are located near the center of the floor. And because of all this pushing and scraping and the fluid that seeps out of the trash, it is necessary to apply a specialized high-strength concrete topping that is impact, abrasion and chemical resistant to prevent the concrete slob, a slab from wearing. Because the, if it wears, it can expose the steel rebar. In 2010, there was a collapsed accident caused by structural failure, which was partly because of the worn concrete near the ports. So we don't want that incident to be repeated. We want to maintain the structural integrity of the transfer station and the application of this topping helps us achieve this. So this, the original AFE or LOA actually came to the board in 2020, but it was pushed back because it was non-emergency item, uh, due to the constraints during the beginning of the pandemic. So since 2020, the condition of the tipping floor has now become critical and it must be repaired immediately. And that's why you see this last minute item. I apologize for that. Uh, so the scope of work in this AFE includes topping four thousand, four hundred and seventy square feet on the tipping floor that has completely worn out, is exposing rebar, structural plates and/or the original concrete slab. And lastly, CLARTS is a vital facility for our solid waste management program. We must keep it operational pretty much at all times. And for these reasons, we would like to request approval, uh, for this work costing seven hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. The general funds will not be impacted. The funding is coming from Special Fund Forty-seven R and this is the CLARTS Revenue, uh, Tipping Fee Fund. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer along with Antronic.
Great, thank you, Ms. Flores, for that. I, I just wanna remind that I remember this conversation two years ago. Um, we were told to only pass through any essential and critical, um, projects and, and contracts through. And so this was one of the things that at that time, we didn't think it was crucial and critical, although two years later have gone past by and now it has become a cru- crucial and critical, essential, uh, restoring this, uh, your tipping, topping, tipping, right? Putting a topping on it, on your tipping fee. Okay, there you go. So, um, I, I agree with this very much and I look, I, I do hope that we, um, I support it and put out, let me see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Colleagues, any questions on this item? So this is putting a topping on our tipping fee floor. Because it needs it, got it. All right. Okay, Ms. Flores, doesn't seem like anybody has any questions, any objectives, colleagues? Objections? Nope, no objections either. All right, is there a motion on the table to move item number five forward and forthwith? To move. Thank you, Vice President Villegas. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Corzan. Uh, Dr. Campos, there's a first by Vice President Villegas and a second by Commissioner Corzan to move item number five forward and forthwith.
Yes, we'll start the voting tabulation. We'll start with you, President Garcia.
Aye.
Vice President Villegas.
Aye.
President Protem Davis.
Davis, aye.
Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flores, for your time and I look forward to hearing that this was done. All right, uh, colleagues, do you guys wanna take a five-minute break? My hearing that. I see, I see Commissioner Reyes saying yes. Commissioner Corzan saying no. Well, we're gonna take a five-minute break. I'll vote it, Commissioner, because I also want one. Dr. Campos, we're gonna take five minutes. We'll be back. It's eleven thirty-seven at eleven, um, forty, so like eleven forty-three?
Okay.
Should just say eleven forty-five, right? Okay, let's just do eleven forty-five. I think that's, uh, six minutes total.
President Garcia, you are now in record mode and if you'd like, I can go ahead and start and reestablish quorum for you.
Yes, please, thank you.
Perfect. It is eleven forty-seven AM for Wednesday, June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, reestablishing quorum. We have President Garcia, Vice President Villegas, President Protem Davis and Commissioners Corzan and Reyes. President Garcia, you do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues, for coming back, of course. I'm gonna take items six and seven together. This, uh, this is a count in all council districts. This is also an AFE for LA Compost. The Bureau of Sanitation and the Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution of an authority for expenditure in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to pay for the planning, development, implementation and operation of regional composting clubs, farmers' market drop-off sites and community composting cooperatives for the collection and composting of organic waste from the City of Los Angeles for the period of January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Authorize the president or two members of Board of Public Works to execute the service agreement. Item number seven is an AFE for LA Compost. This is the Board of Public Works and the Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution of an authority for expenditure in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to pay for the planning, development, implementation, operation and reporting of a community composting coaching program, regional composting clubs and farmers' market drop-off sites for the collection and composting of organic waste from the City of Los Angeles between the periods of January first, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Authorize the president or two members of the board to execute the attached letter of agreement. And, uh, I believe we have a caller on the line?
Yes, we do. We have Dr. Tom Williams. He requested to speak on both items six and seven. Dr. Williams, if you can please unmute your microphone at this time. The Board of Public Works is considering items six and seven together. Since you've asked to speak to, on both items, you'll be given four minutes to speak on both items. Please go ahead.
Can, can we have it after the presentation?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Williams. Uh, I see here, we have Mr. Rosca, Mr. Hilo and Norman, Mr. Tanata here on this item. Go ahead, welcome. Mr. Hilo, you're new.
Well, good morning, President Garcia, Honorable Commissioners, Alex Salu for LA Sanitation and Environment. Um, we're, we are really excited to be here this morning on this item. Um, you know, prior to the state adopting SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the mandatory organic recycling throughout the state, Mayor Eric Garcetti developed the New Green Deal. In the New Green Deal, Mayor Garcetti tried to address the greenhouse gas that's coming out from landfill from the organics. In his plan, he basically directed sanitation to establish location through farmers' markets where residents could bring in their food scraps and place them. And then we take the food scrap and it's basically processed and given back. So I really wanna thank the mayor because in this budget, he did allocate funds for this program and we're gonna thank the board for interesting sanitation for to take these funds and work with LA Compost to develop sites throughout the city where residents can conveniently take their organics, place it and pick up a bag of compost. So we have a very short presentation by Mr. Rosca and, uh, we'll turn it over to James to do the presentation. I will be here if any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. And Dr. Campos, we do have a presentation prepared with slides, so am I okay to share my screen? And then I can provide a copy of these slides to you as well after the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I wasn't aware of the presentation, but let me go ahead and make you a co-host and, Mr. Rosca, if you can please send me the, uh, the slides to enter them into the record. Should we get any requests from the general public on that?
Will do. Thank you, Dr. Campos.
Mr. Rosca and team, in the future, please let, uh, Dr. Campos know that you have a presentation and, and everybody so that we're not doing this at the very last minute. So thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Rosca.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and share my screen right now. And so can everyone see that right now? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, good morning, President Garcia, Commissioners Villegas, David Corson, Reyes, City Attorney, Executive Officer and Bureau, uh, Representatives. My name is James Ross Guy. I'm the Program Manager for our Curbside Green Bin Program and the Project Manager for this Farmers Market and Community Composting Program in the Support Services Division of LA San and Environment. As mentioned, um, LA SAN is presenting today on two items along with the Board Office. So item six is a request for authority uh, for expenditure in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. This is for a letter of agreement with LA Compost to basically develop and manage the Farmers Market and Community Composting Program. Additionally, item number seven from the board is an authority for expenditure in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is basically supplemental funding, which is being tacked on to this single LOA with LA Compost. So our presentation today is going to basically cover both items as well as the scope of services covered between both. And as mentioned, Norman Tanata is also present for the, for the portion coming from the board. Um, so for some background on organics as a whole, LA SAN is responsible for the weekly curbside collection of the green and brown bin from seven hundred fifty thousand single-family households. On average, we collect sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred tons per day of just yard waste and horse manure. And as you can see from the list below, the materials accepted are really anything coming from your yard, so grass, leaves, tree branches, clean and untreated wood. We do accept fruits and vegetables, but only those grown directly from your garden. And then, of course, horse manure and stable bedding for those residents that do have horses on their private property. As Alex mentioned, with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three looking to address, uh, food waste diversion and collection as well as our own city waste goals and goal set in the Green New Deal, LA SAN has been working on a number of programs to basically divert food waste. Um, residents who are part of our current, uh, pilot program, Curb Your Food Waste LA, can use their green bin for food scraps. Um, that was a pilot that was started in twenty nineteen to eighteen thousand households. And LA SAN is working to expand and implement that pro- that program of, for collection citywide by the end of the year. Um, so on, but on top of just curbside bin collection, we're looking at other methods to be able to collect and divert and recycle food scraps. For over twenty years, LA SAN has hosted backyard composting workshops. Uh, we originally started these at our Lopez Canyon and Griffith Park locations, expanding to the South LA Wetlands Park in, I believe, twenty nineteen and most recently, um, as of the reopening of our workshop programs to the Gappy Nature Center down in the harbor. Um, so these are now monthly workshops that are hosted on Saturdays where residents can learn to compost at home, how to do urban gardening with the compost that they're producing and they can even purchase subsidized compost bins, worm bins and compost turners at a reduced rate at, at any of our workshops as well as finished compost. at any of our workshops, as well as finished compost if they want to get started with their own gardens. This is a really great event and a really great resource to be able to provide residents so that they can do composting at home and keep their own recycling local. However, there are challenges for many residents who don't have yard space or don't have the ability to keep a compost bin at their home, especially for people in multifamily households. But we still want to be able to provide methods for, for, you know, communities and for residents to keep their composting local. Back in twenty twenty, we started conducting studies on kind of local composting infrastructure, so community composting and farmers' markets, as we were directed to through the mayor's Green New Deal. From our research, we found that there are many opportunities and locations for community composting. There's a network of over sixty community gardens that exist within the city of L.A., as well as other open and community spaces such as parks, churches, elementary schools, and other spaces where communities need. In addition, the city has a robust farmers' market program. Prior to COVID, there were as many as sixty farmers' markets operating throughout the city, both seasonally and year-round. However, that number has reduced just due to the COVID guidelines and being able to maintain the safe operation. So I believe there are approximately thirty-five to forty seasonal and year-round markets that currently operate. And as part of our research, we were also trying to find out information such as days, hours, who manages these markets, as well as getting some background information from the participants at each of these locations. From our studies and from kind of our research, one of the partners that really stood out was L.A. Compost. They're an organization that's been active in L.A. and in L.A. County for a number of years, basically developing these community composting sites. And they actually had two existing farmers' market food waste collection programs set up at the time we were doing this research. And then, and there was an opportunity provided by the USDA in fall of last year, where L.A. San and L.A. Compost applied together for a grant from the USDA, which I presented to the board in last September. And we received the grant and be able to support these activities. So this letter of agreement is basically the method for us to start the work that we were received from the grant, as well as the additional funding, which was identified from the Board Office and Mayor's Office, to basically supplement the grant award that we received from the USDA. So I'm going to talk about the scope of work from the USDA, and then I'll turn it over to Norman to discuss the scope from the additional board-funded grants, board-funded activities. So on the slide, you'll see a map, and this is basically the spread of all the locations that are going to be developed through this USDA grant. In blue, you'll see fifteen dots for community composting cooperatives. These are local composting infrastructure community spaces, as I mentioned earlier. So these are churches, community gardens, elementary schools, where basically a community partner is going to a composting location with support from L.A. Compost, basically creating the compost bins, providing them education, helping them get started. And then that'll become a resource available to that community to basically maintain and keep going with support from L.A. Compost. For the dots that you see in green, these are the farmers' market food waste drop-off locations. You'll see a total of seven locations. So these were the two existing locations for that L.A. Compost already operated and maintained. And then through the grant, we're going to develop five additional markets in the northeast L.A. and west L.A. area. In the brown, you'll see two dots, and these are for larger regional composting hubs. Basically, the method is that from each of these farmers' markets, the food waste will be collected from the residents. L.A. Compost will provide them, you know, education, training, general outreach. And then L.A. Compost will take the food waste from all of these markets and bring them to the regional composting hubs to actually be composted. So these two larger regional composting hubs are being done in collaboration with Wreckin Parks as well. And the two facilities that are being developed are at the Griffith Park composting hub, as well as the Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park. So these are being done in collaboration with, with Wreckin Parks. And then lastly, to kind of tie in the circle or close the loop, all of the compost that's going to be produced at these regional hubs is going to be applied both at park spaces through training programs. That'll be developed for Wreckin Parks ground maintenance staff, as well as given back to the participants that are providing the food waste from each of these farmers' markets. So basically, you know, closing that loop for residents to have a way to consolidate their compost, their food scraps, keep the composting infrastructure local, and then be able to reapply or use the finished compost as needed within their local spaces. And with that, I'll turn it over to Norman to discuss the additional funding that's being provided by the board.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Rosca, for handing over the virtual mic. Hello, President Garcia, Board Commissioners, City Attorney and Executive Officer. Again, my name is Norman Tanata with the Board of Public Works. Again, before you, worse, item seven, the Board of Public Works is requesting approval of AE two-two-seven four oh five oh seven M in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. As Alex Salu mentioned earlier, included in the board's fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget is a line item, and that included seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in funding from general city purposes for the expansion of local composting sites. The board is, the board is proposing that these funds be utilized through this authority for expenditure for the expansion of L.A. San's brand program, as presented by Mr. Rosca of L.A. San. These, these additional funds will be used for the development and implementation of a community compost coaching program, where L.A. Compost staff will utilize their capacity to coach L.A. City constituents around community composting. These funds will also create ten additional farmers' market drop-off locations where residents can drop off food waste on a weekly basis. Also, this funding will create three additional composting hubs and also will allow for compost quality testing. This will allow for the testing of compost produced at these regional hubs for studies on soil health and additional environmental benefits. If approved, the board is excited for this opportunity to work in conjunction with L.A. San and L.A. Compost as the scope of work behind this authority for expenditure is in line with the mayor's sustainable city plan. City, city plan's goal for the city to divert ninety percent of all solid waste from landfills by year twenty twenty-five through source reduction, reuse, recycling, annual digestion, and composting methods, and also the goal for the collection of food scraps at farmers' markets throughout the city. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll hand over the mic. Back to you, Mr. Rosca.
Thanks, Norman. And so in conclusion, you know, this additional funding will give more options for Angelenos to be able to reduce and recycle their food scraps. Right, L.A. San and the city as a whole have, you know, continuous programs for waste reduction and education. You know, as we discussed, the Discovery Cube item earlier, where we're teaching residents and kids how recycling works, providing workshops and social media and other outreach to basically provide, you know, resources and methods to reduce waste in the first place. L.A. San also has ongoing programs for donation of edible excess food and supporting those activities, and really the hierarchy of making sure that our resources are being used well. And then, as described from this program, we have the backyard composting, which is still going to be ongoing through our monthly workshops, the development of these farmers' market, community composting, and regional hubs, as well as Alex mentioned before, the expansion of our curbside collection program to accommodate food waste in the green bin by winter of this year. So really, through all of these programs, through all of this funding, we're giving residents a menu of options to be able to manage their food scraps in the way that works best for them. And so to close out the presentation, we want to give some special thanks to Mayor Garcetti for all of his initiatives and direct support on a lot of these activities. You'll see on the photo on the right, a picture of Mayor Garcetti, L.A. Compost staff, as well as other staff from Wreckin Parks, L.A. San, and all of our community partners at the Griffith Park facility. We would also like to thank City Council, Mayor's Office staff, specifically Rebecca Rasmussen, Elena Guevara, and Ryan Jackson for helping to champion and support us in these activities, and of course, to the board for, for the approval on the grant, as well as for these additional provided funding to support the additional expansion. And with that, I will turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rosca, for that very thorough presentation. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Reyes.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think it's comprehensive. It gives us a good view of what the entire program is. As I mentioned, I think before, when I was talking to the group, is to ensure that the food rescue face or program of, of L.A. San is connected to this, because it's not just the composting, it's also the, the donation of food and rescuing food and, and making sure that there is access by the disadvantaged communities, because in those areas, there's food insecurity. They hardly have any farmers' market in, you know, in underserved communities. And we really have to take a look at access and to those services that we provide. And then, secondly, you know, connecting that food rescue that we approved before, which is really exciting, and just have that more of connected to each other. It's not just the environmental benefits of, you know, reducing methane and greenhouse gas emissions from the landfill, but it's also about consumption and avoiding food waste and making sure that those, that part of the entire, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle theory or principle is followed. And then lastly, I really just want to applaud making sure that this will be expanded. You have supplemental funding there that you connected, which is gonna make it more effective. And in the future, as I always say, you know, we have to look at funding, right? Because if we're piloting this and at the end of the year, we're expecting it to be at seven hundred fifty thousand customers, we want to be able to continue it. So just keeping that in mind as to what that vision and our goals will be, so that the outcomes that we're looking for on the communities are not left holding the bag or the program is stranded. Thank you.
Good point, Commissioner Reyes. Any other questions, colleagues? I think we can, Mr. Rosca, I think you can remove your presentation now, unless any of my colleagues is okay, got it. Sorry, it was hard for me to see. Doctor, we have public comment on this item, and so Dr. Williams, have you had your chance to speak?
No, not yet. This is Dr. Campos on the line. Dr. Williams, the Board of Public Works is now considering public comments on item six and seven. Per your request, you would like to speak after the presentation. Since these are two items being considered at the same time, you'll be given up to four minutes to speak on both items. Please go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Tom Williams, Phyllis's Coalition for a Safe Community and might say Neighborhood Council Director Emeritus. The basic element that I'm concerned about is I approve this total package of almost a million dollars. However, the presentation and the Board of Public Works has a real problem. There are a hundred neighborhood councils. And there was no mention of incorporating the neighborhood councils into any of this. And those hundred councils have eh roughly a thousand members that participate on a monthly basis as part of the boards. So I'm quite concerned that there is a total exclusion of any reference to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment or the neighborhood councils in this entire presentation. And, and I would highly recommend, although I approve this, to incorporate Dunn and the neighborhood councils into this. Oh, by the way, many of the councils have green environmental committees, which propose various things, including composting. I have, might say, presented on composting at our neighborhood council. And might say, I have been doing composting since around nineteen forty-six, when we had to do it because there was no food. So we're quite concerned about the lack of coordination between public works and neighborhood empowerment and the total avoidance of any mention of neighborhood councils and the fact that we meet once a month usually, and with committee meetings twice a month, every month. And we're paid for by the city of Los Angeles. So it's quite interesting that although many of us in neighborhood councils are doing composting on our site, we have the ability to greatly span, provide venues, provide outreach to the communities, and do promotions to help on composting in our areas. So might say, I'd highly recommend that James and others get a hold of me and/or Dunn and coordinate this good program into the neighborhood council system. So it's quite strange, but, you know, understandable that many of the departments within the city don't even think about neighborhood councils, because they don't participate in them. And that is another problem that needs to be resolved. So I'd highly recommend that give the presentation to at least Dunn, make it available to them, and try to coordinate the program for at least the year with Dunn and the neighborhood councils. I know there are at least ten or twelve neighborhood councils in the northeast L.A. area, which are very interested in composting and doing it ourselves. I have made this year about five trips to Griffith Parks and loading my van with compost and mulch. So we're quite familiar with it, and we're quite, I am quite concerned that there is total absence of any reference to neighborhood councils. There are a hundred of them. There are a thousand people involved, and they represent eh on average forty thousand people per neighborhood council. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for your very important point. To that, I, I know, Mr. Rosca, can you explain to us, have you involved? And, Mr. Hilo, can you explain how you have involved the neighborhood councils on this project, or how will you involve them?
Yeah, so to date, Commissioner Garcia, we have met with, I believe, at least two neighborhood councils from the northeast L.A. area. One of them being, I believe, the Los Feliz Neighborhood Council, as they were one of the starting locations that had the farmers' market drop-off location. So to Dr. Williams' point, right, we do definitely understand the impact and the benefit of coordinating with both the neighborhood councils, as well as the council district offices will be as we start the actual outreach of the program. So, right, we'll be working closely with L.A. Compost as really the boots on the ground, who's also working with all of these farmers' markets. And then, as we're developing each of the sites, working with both the council districts, and I think, yes, reaching out to the neighborhood councils would be a great resource, to, you know, basically get the word out to the constituents that these programs are happening, along with our own outreach and marketing that we'll be doing on L.A. San's front.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, I would appreciate that. And also, it just sounds like you, two council, neighborhood councils, perhaps we can increase that as soon as possible. Commissioner Reyes is, she is our lead on this food task force and also on any of our organics projects. So I know that Commissioner Reyes has vast amount of how to do outreach and how to get everybody involved. So I, I would strongly suggest that you work with our Commissioner Reyes on making that happen for this program.
Yes, thank you, President Garcia. And yes, we, Commissioner Reyes has started attending our L.A. San internal monthly organics meeting. So yes, I think that'll be a great opportunity to be able to connect and use her and the board's resources.
Exactly. Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions, colleagues? Any objections? Hearing none, is there an item to move, item six, is there a motion to move item six and seven forward?
To move?
Thank you, Commissioner Reyes. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Vice President Viegas. Dr. Campos, we have a first by Commissioner Reyes to move, and, and a second by Vice President Viegas to move item six and seven forward and forthwith.
President Garcia, we'll go ahead and start the voting tabulation. We'll start with you, Madam President.
Aye.
Vice President Viegas.
Aye.
President Protem Davis. Dr. Davis, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Corzan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Aye.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosca, Mr. Hilo, and Mr. Tanata for your time. Now, your items are now approved, and look forward to all the great things you're gonna do around this. Now, your items are now approved and look forward to all the great things you're gonna do around this. Um, very exciting uh projects that you guys have going on.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the week.
You too.
All right, colleague, moving on to item number eight. This is an AFE for Career Communications Group, Inc. The Board of Public Works and Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution for an authority for expenditure in the amount of fifty thousand to pay for exhibit booth space for the twenty twenty-two Black Engineering of the Year Award STEM Conference in Washington DC from February seventeen twenty twenty-two to February nineteen twenty twenty-two. And, Mr. Campos, I, you are changing your hat to presenter.
I am. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here presenting before you the item for uh expenditure in AFE to pay Career Communications Incorporated for the BIA Conference, which is Black Engineer Year Annual Awards that we attended February seventeen through February nineteenth of twenty twenty-two. The proposed AFE before you is to pay our bill and and to pay the uh BIA Conference for the fifty thousand dollar commitment that we made to attend the a conference. The fifty thousand dollars not only provided us a platinum platinum partnership uh virtual assistance, but it also provided fifteen all-access passes along with advertisement and exhibit booths, documents, and also access to uh recruiter uh that are on the spot. In addition to that, we also provided a listing of our virtual conferences for attendees guide. We also did an event website recognition, a mobile app inclusion, and also various digital social media and uh banner inclusions to advertise the City of Los Angeles. And not just the Department of Public Works, but also the Department of Airports, the Department of Water and Power, the Harbor Department, along with other uh agencies within the City of Los Angeles. Um, the one thing that was very unique this year uh in it in attendance with BIA is that we were able to do an interview village suite. Uh, the interview village suite allowed us to not only connect with students uh from historically black colleges and universities, but also be able to start the interview process and start uh encouraging them to apply for the City of Los Angeles. As Commissioner Davis has advocated throughout many years to increase our hiring of black engineers in the City of Los Angeles, this is just one of five things that we're doing across the HBCU recruitment strategy. Again, this is just for the BIA Conference, the fifty thousand dollars. I want to provide you a couple of uh statistics for your uh for your um consideration um as you consider this item. The BIA Conference itself uh allowed us to attract about eight hundred and eighty-three participants to our virtual network uh through this interview village. We were able to identify about two hundred and sixty-one uh students that were able to come through our village. Uh, and we have statistics in terms of how many times they clicked, how long were they clicking, uh who were they chatting with? We did receive three hundred and fifty-one whiteboard discussions. We received a hundred and sixty-seven chats uh through the process. Also, just to give you an order of magnitude, approximately eight thousand six hundred and ten participants uh registered for the BIA Conference. About nine thousand six hundred, I'm sorry, three thousand three hundred were about professionals, about four thousand eight hundred and eighty were college students. And so this gives us a a an order of magnitude in terms of who attended the conference. This conference this year was a hybrid model. Those individuals that were able to go to Washington DC attended in person. Those that wanted to attend virtual through the platform were able to stay at home and join uh through a virtual uh network through Zoom, et cetera. The City of Los Angeles opted to go with a hybrid and stay virtual and remote. Everything we did was um through remote and computer access. Uh, in addition to that, we were able to identify students in into various um class standings, if you will. Uh, for example, many of the students uh that attended uh were of senior standing, approximately forty-one percent, and about sixteen percent were juniors. So very highly uh attended by seniors and and juniors in their class rankings. A lot of the uh disciplines in engineering mostly came from uh mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, civil engineers, chemical engineers, and biological engineers as well. There's a couple of attendees that were physics majors, astronomy majors, industrial um uh uh computing ma- uh majors. Uh, but it was a great mixture of all these students and disciplines that are attending the BIA Conference. In terms of gender mix, thirty-six percent of the attendees were female and fifty-five percent of the attendees were male. So we, this is a great platform for us to recruit not only black engineers, but also engineers that are women as well. And so this was a uh a great pleasure to to not only uh coordinate this and work with Dr. Davis on the BIA Conference. Uh, but this was definitely a a step forward to increase our hiring and open the opportunities for black engineers to be employed with the City of Los Angeles. One last note before I open it up for any uh questions that your board may have. Just wanted to recognize also the Innovation and Productivity Commission for a pri- uh for approving a a grant that allowed us to pay for this um this bill that's before you, the AFE, the fifty thousand dollars will be paid from a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that was awarded to the Board of Public Works for the HBCU Engineering Recruitment Strategy. So there is no general fund impact. It's it's all coming from the grant, and we would like to request your board to approve the AFE so that we can pay our bill. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions and any commentary that Dr. Davis may have to add to to the greatness of of the BIA Conference and how we've been uh attending these conferences for the last several years.
Sure. Go ahead, Dr. Davis.
Yeah, I I think that one of the great assets of the BIA Conference is it allows us all in one weekend in one location to be able to explore various talented engineering students from different regions throughout the United States. And they bring to us the kind of nationally accredited, approved engineering curriculum that we look for in the hiring that we do. So it does allow us all in one place, one location, at one time, one weekend, to be able to search for those individuals who could potentially be recruited and interviewed for uh matriculating into the employment of the City of Los Angeles. So for that, it is a quite quite uh great asset. Other than that, we would have to go to different states all throughout the year. So the fact that this is a national conference and all the students are in one place is of great help.
Agreed very much so. And uh, do you think you'll be going out in person this year? I know that you haven't been going out for the past two years.
That's the million-dollar COVID question that I wish I could answer. Not medicine, but we have in the past.
I know.
We've been doing this since two thousand, what, eighteen? Uh, Dr. Campos.
This is our fourth.
Um, engineers of the year is Dr. Uh John Slaughter, who's a professor, who's a distinguished professor at USC. He was initially the president of s- of Occidental College. Each year, they have a African-American engineer who has been an outstanding role model in engineering. So he was the very first one when they started this project many years ago. And he still is available to work with engineers and collaborate with those of us in the City of Los Angeles in terms of things that we can do to not only recruit, but to sustain uh these minority engineers. So uh that is a rewarding experience uh to meet some of the various uh major companies uh from Northrop Grumman to Raytheon um and many other uh national private companies that we compete with when we present as a city. We are one of the largest city in the country. And when we present, we try to do so in a fashion that is representative of a major city in this in the country. So we try to compete and we collaborate with all of the various city bureaus and departments when we present the opportunities that we have at the conference. And of course, everybody loves the sunshine, as they say. So they love the fact that we're on the West Coast, and we try to present Los Angeles in a way that's reflective of our reputation nationally, even though we are a public sector engineering entity. Uh, we are there right along with the major private entities. And even though in many ways they might be paying much m- more money, uh, there still is an attraction to public service engineering. And the pensions that public service employees get is one of those tools that allow people to know that the benefits are great and fulfilling, uh even though it's not uh the private uh competitive uh uh engineering.
Thank you so much for that. I do recognize the importance that and what you're doing, Dr. Davis. And you've been on this crusade for a very long time and very proud of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your work.
The city.
Our city.
Yeah, well, great. Thank you for bringing that to us at the city. We appreciate that. All right, colleagues, any questions for Dr. Davis or uh Dr. Campos?
I also thank our attorney. We stole our attorney from Public Works to help us, Ted, as well. Oftentimes giving us information about public policies that oftentimes the city doesn't want to uh engage or collaborate with a certain state. And yet we have this shortfall, and that's the very state we might need to go to to help strengthen our own challenges. So it's very helpful to have that information, and sometimes we'll have to go to council and ask for an exception because we're not going to vacation in Mississippi. We're going there to do business. So uh it is important to have the support, and we appreciate the help that Ted has given us over the years as well.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Ted, for that too as well. Very recognized for the work that you do.
It it's 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 amazing, this program. So I'm I'm happy to do anything I possibly can to help.
Agreed. Thank you. All right. Um, I don't see any objections or any other questions. Is there a motion on the table to move night? Item number eight forward and forthwith.
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there a second? A second. I'll second it. Uh, Dr. Uh, Dr. Campos is a first by me, Dr. Davis, and a second by me to move item number eight forward and forthwith.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start the voting tabulation at this time. We'll start with you, President Garcia.
I.
Vice President Villegas.
Uh, I.
President Pro Tem Davis.
Davis, I.
And Commissioner Reyes.
I.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. For the record, Commissioner Corzan has left the meeting.
Yes, Commissioner Corzan has left the meeting for today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues. Very good. I look forward to more of this. All right, moving on to item number nine. This is an AFE in Council District eleven. This is for the Southern California Gas Company. The Bureau of Sanitation and the Office of Accounting are requesting board approval and execution for an authority for expenditure in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, new adjusted amount of one million five hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to increase funding to pay for the natural gas utility fees for building for building, is that what I'm reading there? Building heating boilers and Hyperion Bioenergy Facility operations at Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. My apologies if it's not building, and I'm sorry I'm getting stuck to that. It's just I I wrote my notes and I unfortunately wrote on it, but if it doesn't say building, please correct me. All right, Ms. McIntosh, thank you for being here. Um, please, please go on.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for having me. I'm Nicole McIntosh. I'm with the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. Um, and it is actually for building heating. So that was correct. Um, uh, the natural gas that we um budget for is covers two things, which is the heating of our office buildings here and for our process um boilers. For the the boilers are used to heat our anaerobic digesters. Um, over this last summer, we had an unexpected flooding event, which was quite uh dramatic and catastrophic. Um, at that time, we were not able to um supply gas because the major user of our digester gas that we produce is the our bioenergy facility. So that provides all of the power um at the facility a- as well as the um the uh steam to heat of our our boilers. So that our um bio solids that is sent out is um at a Class A, which is very high quality. So we can use that for land application. Um, unfortunately, during that incident, we were not able to produce any digester gas, so thus we are not able to produce any electricity. Um, to supplement that, we had to use um a significant amount of natural gas for our boilers. And uh so we generally uh average about um uh thirteen thousand dollars worth of natural gas purchases in a month. Um, in the month of August, we um uh hit a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for that. So it was um a, you know, a ten times of what we were expected. Um, this was a once-in-a-lifetime uh uh incident um that we could never have anticipated happening. So this is just to um pay for the bills at that, the to pay for the wa- the gas bills from that time. It has depleted the funds for the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, and so we are just asking to supplement uh that amount uh so that we can pay the gas bill.
Great. Thank you for that, Ms. McIntosh. Any questions, colleagues? Hearing none. Any objections? And Dr. Davis? You're on mute.
Mrs. McIntosh, I understand we're supplementing the money so that we can pay the bill. What fund are we getting the money fro- from uh to supplement it?
Um, it is the three thirty-four utility, I believe. Um, I would have to um double-check on that.
And that comes from your the your bureau's budget?
Yes, that is part of our um budgeted amounts that we have for for utilities.
Okay, got you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. Um, I don't see any other questions, any objections?
No objections.
God, is there a second to my motion to move item number nine forward and forthwith?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Campos is a first by me and a second by Dr. Davis to move item number nine forward and forthwith.
We'll go ahead and start the vote. At this time, we'll start with you, President Garcia.
I.
Vice President Villegas.
I.
President Pro Tem Davis.
I.
And Commissioner Reyes.
I.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
You so much. All right, colleagues. Thank you, Ms. McIntosh, for your time. I
Thank you very much.
Have a good rest of the week. Okay, I'm moving on to, this is our administrative item number ten. This is a specification submitted for board adoption and authorization to advertise for the invitation of bid Council District two, four, six, eight, nine, ten, and thirteen backlog reduction project phase one, work order E one nine zero eight nine six five estimate of two million three hundred sixty-three dollars, sixty-three thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. Bid receipt date of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second to my motion to move item number ten forward and forthwith?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Villegas. Dr. Campos is a first by me and a second by Dr. Uh, Vice President Villegas. You just got your master's. We're just pushing you to go forward.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a great suggestion there.
There you go. It is undelivered uh suggestion to, we, you know, we just know you you have all this time now that you should just do it now. Uh, to move item number ten uh forward and forthwith, um, Dr. Campos.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. My gardener is here, so I apologize for the background noise. I'll do this quickly. Uh, President Garcia.
I.
Vice President Villegas.
I.
President Pro Tem Davis.
I.
And Commissioner Reyes.
I.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And item number eleven, this is in all council districts. The mayor has approved and authorized the Board of Public Works to execute the personal services contract with Prime Government Solutions for meeting management system services. Yay for this one. Uh, are there any questions on this item? I know Dr. Campos can help us to answer them. Hearing none. Uh, is there a second to my motion to move item number eleven forward and forthwith?
Second.
I'm gonna take, I'll take them from both. There's a first by me and a second by Commissioner Reyes and Dr. Davis to move item number eleven forward and forthwith.
Thank you. We'll start the vote. We'll start with you, President Garcia.
I.
Vice President Villegas.
I.
President Pro Tem Davis.
Davis, I.
And Commissioner Reyes.
I.
This motion is adopted and carries unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, uh, we're now on our last item. This is an item number twelve, Transportation Projects Update by the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority plus Department of Transportation. Who do we have here for that?
We have a team from the LA Metro uh here today, President Garcia. If you're from the LA Metro team at this time, if you can please raise your hands, so I can quickly add you to the panelists. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your patience. You should receive invitations to join us in the next few seconds. And then as soon as you start, or as soon as you're entered as a panelist, if you can, please just let me know who will be presenting your screen, so I can make you co-host. I believe we have the LA Metro team all on the line except for Eric Chu. Eric, I'm getting a declination, but I'm gonna keep trying to add you. There you go. Perfect. LA Metro team, if you can just please turn on your video cam, I will go ahead and start spotlighting you for our board. And if you can just let me know who is going to be the lead for presenting your screen, and I will go ahead and um make you co-host.
Fernando Shannon Hanley is sharing her screen.
Perfect. Thank you. Shannon, I'm sending you that co-host rights. Shannon, I'm sending you that co-host right. You should receive that in a second now. Once you do that, you should have a share screen icon located towards the middle of your screen. And you can go ahead and start sharing your screen at that time. Perfect. Will this be kicked off by uh? There you go. Thank you.
Hi, this is uh Jim Cohen. I'm sitting in for uh Brian Pennington. And I'll just be uh introducing uh the various metro staffers. The first uh up should be Stephanie Leslie, which will be uh providing an update on the Crenshaw project.
Good morning.
Morning.
Pleasure to be back with you again today. And the slides that I will be sharing with you today are mostly finished work, I believe exclusively finished work, since we have already given our contractor a notice on of substantial completion for two of the three and segments on the project, and we anticipate giving them completion notice on the third segment this month. So as of the end of June, construction on Crenshaw should be complete. With that, let me share with you our stations. Next slide, please. Starting at the north end, this is our exposition Crenshaw Station. The two upper photos, these are different angles of our plaza. The photo on the left, this is the enclosure around the escalators and the stairs that take you from the plaza level down to the concourse. In the background on the right, that is the West Angeles Church and parking for the station is we will be sharing the parking lot with LA, excuse me, with the West Angeles Church. We have already worked out an agreement with them to lease parking spaces there for our patrons. The photo on the bottom, this is a picture of some of the artwork down at the plaza level. This is our porcelain enamel artwork. I think you've seen shots of the porcelain enamel elsewhere on the project. But this is this typical of what you'll see at the platform levels of all eight of our stations. Next photo, please. Continuing to the MLK Station, Martin Luther King. On the far left, this is just a shot from the platform level, looking into the tunnel. Totals in the upper section of the slide, these are both photos from the plaza level. In the center, a unique take on station furniture and benches in the plaza area. And on the upper right, this is the glass enclosure again around the escalators and the stairs taking you from plaza to the concourse level. In the middle of the screen is a shot of the fair gates at the concourse level, and the far background is one of our mosaic artworks. Next slide, please. We're now at the Vernon Station, Limerick Park Station. Upper left is an aerial shot, obviously, of the station. And upper right, this is the glass enclosure, again, taking you from plaza to concourse. And and at the bottom left, a shot of the platform level. On the far side, can't really see the detail of the artwork. But again, the porcelain enamel artwork is along the platform levels of all eight of our stations. Next slide, please. We're now above ground at Slauson High Park. And these are shots on the left of the platform area, the entry at the top, and then platform at the bottom. Bottom right, this is a snapshot of one of our porcelain enamel panels at the at the platform level at Slauson. Next slide. Continuing to Fairview Heights, this is at West Boulevard and Florence. On the right, you have a shot of some of the porcelain enamel artwork. On the left, upper left, this is our entry canopy. And at the bottom, just a shot of parking. This is the second station that has parking along the line. You also see some of the furnishings, the, excuse me, the bike lockers that are present at this station. And I believe we have bike lockers at all of our six of our eight stations. Next slide, please. Now we are at downtown Inglewood, which is La Brea and Florence. On the upper left, this is our entrance canopy, our entrance plaza for the station. Bottom left, at this station, we also have a bus transfer facility immediately adjacent to the station. And the bottom right pictures of the platform area with the artwork above. Next slide, please. Continuing to Westchester Veteran Station, this is at Hendry and Florence. Top right, these are our entry, entry canopies, excuse me. And bottom left shots of the platforms. We have a split platform at this station. Sorry about that. Mute. And the bottom, excuse me, the top left, this is a snapshot of some of the artwork that's posted on the back of the ticket vending machine and the entry canopy. And this is artwork that you can see and view and hopefully enjoy from the street level. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is the Century Aviation Station. The top left, you get a view from a distance of the the plaza below and the platform above. This is our one and only aerial station on the project. Top right is a shot of taken from the plaza, excuse me, from the platform level of the station. And bottom left is a photo of the entry plaza. Next slide, please. And again, we're at the end of the project, so no additional closure is anticipated for this project. Next slide. Annette, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. Hi, Stephanie. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Annette Cortez, and I'm the Community Relations Manager on the Crenshaw LAX Project. And I will provide just an overview of the public outreach efforts that we continue to provide along the alignment, although major construction has been completed. We just uh had our last uh series of community meetings last month. And we will be, we will be meeting with our Community Leadership Leadership Council tomorrow to discuss ideas and just share the ca- opening campaigns for the line and opportunities for VIP tours and other volunteering opportunities that we will be able to provide for them. Um, we continue to have, again, virtual community meetings, uh briefings with key stakeholder groups. We continue to uh meet and join already existing uh group meetings such as neighborhood councils, uh neighborhood block meetings to provide updates on uh the project. Uh, we have e-notifications, phone calls, one-on-ones, um a little more now, one-on-ones with um stakeholders who are directly impacted by any activities along this project corridor. We have our social media platforms to continue to inform um the community. We also continue to have a communication with our Eat, Shop, Play members, which is um a large group of small businesses along the corridor to provide them with um support and assistance throughout uh the completion of the project. Next slide. Eric, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Annette. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Eric Chen. I'm a senior transportation planner for the Small Business Economic Resource Team with LA Metro. And I'll give up a brief presentation on our pilot construction mitigation programs, the Business Solution Center and the Business Interruption Fund. Um, first, I'll talk about the Business Solution Center. Uh, the BSC provides hands-on business assistance and support services to small businesses along the Crenshaw LAX Transit Project. Uh, some of the resources that we provide are uh hands-on business development, expert business advice coaching, uh technical assistance, and refer referrals to expert uh professionals. Since the program started in 2014, over 400 businesses were contacted. Uh, over 300 business intakes uh and assessments took place, and over 1,100 business uh business referrals were made. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the BIF, Metro's BIF, has we made uh provides financial assistance to small mom and pop businesses that are impacted by Metro's transit rail construction. Uh, we define a mom, a small mom and pop business as a business with 25 or fewer full-time employees. Uh, grant amounts are determined by business revenue loss directly related to the period of metro construction disruption. Uh, Metro's BIF has remained active throughout construction and throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, as of June 2021, the BIF is up to accepting applications for transit rail construction project, construction impact along the Crenshaw LAX Transit Project, the Little Tokyo area of the Regional Connector, and sections 1, 2, and 3 of the Purple Line Extension uh sustained from March 202020 forward. Uh, next slide. Since the project started through May 13th, uh over 835 uh grants have been awarded uh totaling a amount, an amount of 20 million, 20 million 871 dollars. And that's that for that slide.
Okay, are there any questions as far as the Crenshaw LAX before we get into the Regional Connector?
So we basically have completed the Crenshaw Line in terms of construction, correct?
That is correct.
Any cleanup activities that need to take place um as a result of the major work having been completed?
Well, yes, we still have our punchless work to do, and that's part of any major construction project. By granting them substantial completion, that means that the work is complete to a point where we can begin our Phase 2 testing and our internal training and testing. And other work that will follow on includes some of the paving, for example, in within the city of Inglewood and other work that was not part of Walshy's scope of work, but still part of the Crenshaw Project in general. But for various reasons, these pieces of work, we decided not to add to the existing construction contract. So we do have a follow-on contract that will start up this summer and complete some of these little pieces of work that were not in the original design bid scope of work. So that will be working up, will be beginning this summer, and the punchless work from Walshy is continuing.
We have been working with city agencies, mainly the Bureau of Engineering and the Bureau of Street Services, and doing some of the tightening up projects that need to take place moving forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I apologize for, go ahead and complete your sentence.
So you're thinking, for example, the paving that was performed on Crenshaw, is that what you're talking?
Yes, exactly. And any, you know, you may have a chipped sidewalk because one of the trucks came in and had to move something. So some little uh shining of the shoe, if you will, uh has to take place now that we've finished the most important work. Uh, and so I wanted to know in our vision, when do we anticipate that we will have a public display of the Crenshaw Line? Or is there such a thing? Are we waiting for a more comprehensive display of the entire line from various projects to the other as they are interrelated? What is the vision as we think about completing in totality the Crenshaw Line? What is the vision uh for us in terms of how we will share this milestone of completion with the public?
We will have a series of events.
Okay.
To celebrate the opening of the Crenshaw Line. And starting, I believe, next month. Is that so many dates? I believe starting next month, we will have opening dedications for each of the stations.
Oh, great.
Station will have its own separate dedication date. So those will be seven separate, I believe, on Saturdays. One is on a Friday, but the others are all going to be on Saturdays commemorating the opening and celebrating the opening and com- and completion of each individual station. In addition to that, we will.
That'll be like in July, right?
Starting in July, yes.
Great.
And heading through, I believe, August, maybe early September.
Now, the stations are named after streets, is that correct? You know, Crenshaw, uh, well, yeah, they're named after streets. So each of the four stations you have told me have been named after a street in that area. Is that correct?
They have been renamed. At the beginning, when we first started this project, they were all named after streets. But since maybe halfway through the project, our board has determined what the final station names will be. For example, initially Hendry was called Hendry, obviously, but now it is the um Westchester Veteran Station.
Got you.
La Brea Station is now formally named Downtown Inglewood Station.
Got you.
Vernon is now Limerick Park. MLK has not changed. Expo has not changed. Slauson is now Height Park. And West is now Fairview Heights.
Right. So I don't know if it's appropriate, but one of the things that's important historically is, is that years ago, when we started this project, Julian Dixon was the congressman for the area who really started to advocate and fight for funding for this whole line in Washington. And I think he might have been a part of the Tran- the Transportation Commission. And of course, Mayor Tom Bradley, believe it or not, was the mayor when we had the vision about this project. So I think, I don't know if it's appropriate to remark in your presentation before the board, but certainly at some point in time down the line, I think remembering the former Congressman Julian Dixon would be something that we should ponder uh as we move forward. And and I thank you for this presentation today on the Crenshaw Line.
I will take that note and definitely share it with all our teammates here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Leslie, for your uh very thorough report, and we look forward to getting an invitation to all those openings. Both are in the mail now.
Yes.
Getting in the mail. All right, well, thank you.
This is Jim Cohen again. Next up for Regional Connector will be Matt Antonelli.
Ms. Cohen? I I can't see you, that's why.
Can you see me?
Yeah, I can see you. Yeah, we're still kind of talking, so just, you know, kind of, let's kind of have some sense of this meeting here. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Cohen, your next presentation.
Yeah, the uh the next presentation will be made by Matt Antonelli, and he will review the Regional Connector.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to be with you today to share some of the progress we have with Regional Connector. Um, like you see, the uh for the map here, we're we're just about 94% complete and still targeting uh completing our construction and and actually opening the lineup by the end of this year, sometime in the fall of 2022. Uh, next slide, please. Going through each of the uh the locations and and seeing some progress that we have um up on the top of the plaza level, where we're backfilling all of our stations. Uh, this is the Little Tokyo Arch District Station. Uh, preparing for final concrete at the top, uh the canopy is installed, a lot of the finishes are being installed. Uh, and then down below into the the pla- or into the platform level, uh it looks much more like a station now with the artwork and lighting and and everything there um in the in the guideway itself. For the next dish, or next slide, please. Moving on to the uh historic Broadway Station, this one is probably a little further behind than the others um as far as as work remaining. We still have a lot of work, both uh in the station and on top of the station in in the street. Um, but we're we're focusing right now on getting the guideway bought off where the trains are actually running through for testing uh or at the platform and and then up top, working around um finishing up some of the elevators and stairways so we could finish the canopies and all the other things that that lead into the actual station itself. Next slide, please. The Grand Avenue Bunker Hill Station is our furthest along. Um, cool pictures here. We have a mosaic art piece there on the left. That is. That is, is gonna be pretty impressive, right now it's kind of hard to see with all the scaffolding, but this is a sixty-foot mosaic art piece that. Uh, we'll have some glass elevators running along it, and it'll be a kind of a, a, a tribute to the, the art museums and around the area. And then the, the picture on the right is showing some of the granite stairways being put in, um, signaling that we're. We're really getting close to finishing all the work at the uh, platform and concourse level, so that's a. An a, a great sign for the project to get, get that done and get that out of the way. Next slide. So for Flower Street, um, restoration continues to be a focus, uh, we are finishing up some sideways, our sidewalk work. Uh, curb and gutters, ADA ramps, uh, some, got some pavers going in at Six and Flower on the right. And right now, the, they're working with the contractor to, to really fine tune that restoration schedule. Um, so I could come back and we could talk about, uh, some closures that we may need through the weekend to do our final, final AC cap. Um, we want to get that final paving in so we could get out of that Flower Street. And really open up all those, those closures that have been in place for quite a while, um, and getting those opened up for the stakeholders is a, is a priority for us right now. Next slide, please. So as far as street closure requests, uh, Flower Street, like I just talked about, we still need to pave it, we're, we're looking at like block to block what that looks like. So maybe some weekend work that we need to, need some help on. I presented in the past about AT&T work at Second and Broadway, Second and Spring. Um, that work is going to be put on hold, I ran into some issues, uh, that. Don't need to get into details here, but we're in some issues with, with FTA and, and uh, it's caused me to, to delay that, delay that work, uh, probably a few months, so. Um, probably later this year, I'll come back and we could talk more about the AT&T work and the disclosures needed. Um, specifically on Spring Street and Second Street between Hill and Broadway, uh, so that, that will come later on. And then, and then we're looking at the rest of the paving project wise, um, so obviously. In around the Second Street, it's gonna be depend on the AT&T, we're putting other parts of the project, whether it's First Street or Alameda. We're looking at those paving dates and, and be happy to sit with the all you to, to go through what, what needed to, to finish the project and get it cleaned up. And then I have submitted a request to BOE for uh, so, it would be northbound Flower Street, and, and President Garcia, you're aware of that. I'm working through those, that paperwork right now. Next slide. Uh, as far as community relations, public outreach, you know, Olga, my community relations manager is doing a heck of a job keeping. Uh, the stakeholders informed and, and uh, working with all of them through the different events and local. Local issues and, and uh, as of right now, we continue to uh, have the team. Out there, meeting with all the stakeholders and going through all the public meetings and keeping everyone up to date of the construction progress and, and working through any issues that construction may lead to. Next slide. And Eric, I don't know if you want to report on this?
Sure, um, so since the project started, the Metro BIF has awarded the Little Tokyo area. Uh, a hundred and five grants to thirty-three business, businesses, uh, with a total grant value of two point two million dollars. And then for the second Broadway segment, we've awarded thirty-six grants to twenty-three businesses and in the amount of. Uh, nine hundred and fifty, about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Eric. Um, and that's it for our presentation, Regional Connector, be happy to answer any questions that the uh, board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Antonelli, for that, our colleagues, any questions on the regional connector? Hearing none, Matt, I look forward to working with you on those street closures and making sure that we're always um, beforehand, not after.
Yes, ma'am, fully, fully understand.
Yes, please, please make sure that you work with our BOE staff on that. Okay, any, I don't hear any questions on this one, we can move to your second, to your third presentation, Mr. Cohen.
Hi, uh, it's Jim Cohen back again, and so I'll be doing my section, next slide, please, uh, section one of the Purple Line. Uh, we are standing at seventy-seven percent complete, the forecast for. Uh, Revenue Service is still a fall of twenty-four, next slide, please. These are some photographs of La Brea Station, uh, the upper right photograph is, uh, we've actually started street restoration. We have had six successful street, full-street closures of Wilshire Boulevard. Uh, we have three more to go, uh, again, start uh, with this weekend. Uh, they have been going very well, and we're uh, converting the suspended decking into the backfilled. Uh, street situation out there, the lower photograph on the right is La Brea Station, just showing some of the. Uh, struts being removed, we are up to the concourse level, which is the mid-level. Uh, we'll take these struts out, build the second lift walls, and then the roof on that extreme west end of the station. And the lower photograph on the left is the appendage structures, uh, providing ventilation, whether exhaust or fresh air. Uh, into the stations, and these are typically located uh, within the sidewalk space, and we're con- currently working on those. Various uh, appendages along Wilshire Boulevard. Next, please. At Fairfax Station, uh, the upper right photograph shows the arched rebar for the roof. Uh, pre- most of the roof at Fairfax Station is complete, except for a couple roof sections on the extreme west. Uh, the lower photograph is, uh, those steel beams are these plenums. Uh, that uh, creates a, a void space from the ceiling on the concourse level to the arch. Uh, which is used to move air uh, to, to various places uh, within the station. And the lower photograph on the left shows the formwork that we use for constructing the exterior walls. This is level two, uh, those forms are sitting on the concourse, once that wall is poured, you could see the rebar kind of arching out there. Uh, that's where the roof will be placed.
Known caller.
Uh, next, please. As far as street closures, uh, that we will not, uh, we don't have any plan for the ne- next six months. Uh, we will keep uh, everyone informed, uh, with a long lead time, but right now. Uh, we're not planning to cl- uh, close any streets uh, in the near future. Next, please. And uh, this is our slide on the Business Interrupting Fund, uh, Eric, do you want to say anything on this?
Uh, sure, uh, for the Purple Line Extension, section one, uh, the BIF has awarded. Uh, two hundred and sixty-four grants to ninety-one businesses, um, for a total amount of six point, about six point six million dollars.
Any questions for me?
Any questions, colleagues? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Kundra, for your presentation, and Mr. Shun, do you have another one?
Yes, we do, so next up is section two, Mike McKenna will be briefing you.
Good afternoon, uh, President Garcia and Commissioners, my name is Mike McKenna, I'm the project manager for section two of the Purple Line Extension. So for our newer commissioners, um, section two is. Close to ninety percent within the city of Beverly Hills, but more than half of our construction takes place within the city of Los Angeles and Century City. Um, our forecasted revenue service date is late twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're a little over fifty percent complete with the construction, and I'll, I'll show you a few slides of what the construction looks like in Century City in a minute. Uh, next slide, please. So just uh, to situate where our station is in Century City. And where our staging yards are, you can see we're in Constellation Boulevard. Uh, at the intersection of Constellation Boulevard and Avenue of the Stars, our entrance to the station is on. The northeast corner of the intersection adjacent to uh, development by uh, J and B Realty that is in construction. Uh, we're also adjacent to the, uh, the newly completed hotel, Century Plaza. Uh, we're adjacent to the Westfield Mall and a number of other high-rise buildings in Century City. Yeah, including the one that our office is in, you can see the, the crane out my window is the, the crane servicing the tunnel access shaft. That is behind the triple-A building on Century Park East, adjacent to Beverly Hills High School, next slide, please. So on tunneling, we're um. Approaching two-thirds completely on um, both board tunnels. Uh, so you can see there's a map that shows the location of the machines, uh, they started in Century City. And uh, now their one machine is just east of Dohini Drive and one is just west. They're both in the city of Beverly Hills, uh, so we've completed. We, earlier last year and beginning of this year, we completed Reach Five of the Purple Line Extension, which was between Century City and the Wilshire Rodeo Station. We're currently excavating Reach Four and um, or about twenty-seven percent complete on one of the board tunnels. On Reach Four and about just under fifty percent complete on the other one. Our forecasted completion for the excavation of the tunnels is this fall. We expect one of the machines to reach the tail tracks of the La Cienega Station uh, by the end of September. And the other one by the end of October, next slide, please. So here are some photos showing the ongoing excavation at the Century City Constellation Station. We're about just under fifty percent complete for the excavation. Um, in the photos, on the, we'll start with the one on the bottom right, that big opening in the sky, that's. Uh, the opening in the entrance excavation, which I pointed out was on the northeast corner of the intersection. So you can see that the contractor is pushing material from the main station box into the entrance, and we're removing material from the entrance excavation. Uh, trucks are queuing on Constellation Boulevard and Century Park East. We're doing our part to make sure that the traffic doesn't impact local businesses and tenants of the high-rise buildings surrounding. Uh, our office and the staging yards, and so far that's been going, um, that work has been progressing very well. Uh, we do have some city of LA sewer and storm drain work that we're currently uh, supporting within the excavation. So the ec- the excavation is active east of Avenue of the Stars. And within the inner intersection of Avenue of the Stars and west of Avenue of the Stars, we still have to finish. Come, uh, relocation of a city storm drain, but we're working with our partners. At the Bureau of Engineering and the Bureau of Contracts Administration to make sure that that work is performed, uh, to the city's satisfaction. Um, next slide, please. So for street closures in Century City, we're not looking to come to this board to request any. Uh, full-street closures anytime soon, most likely not until the restoration period, that's out in the future. We do have some ongoing lane closures that are highlighted there. Through the end of this year, a lot of those lane closures are related to the ongoing uh, storm drain work that I just referred to. And of course, the excavation of the station box too, we have Constellation Boulevard narrowed down to a couple of lanes. Um, while we have staging on the deck, uh, just because of the limited staging area that was in Century City. Uh, but all this work is being performed in accordance with our environmental documents and um. You know, so far. All of our supporters here in Century City are. Um, informed of the work that's going on and really no complaints from, from uh, local businesses to this date, next slide, please. So Eric, I guess I'll let you talk about the BIF.
Sure, um, for Purple Line Extension, section two, uh, as of May thirteenth. Uh, the BIF has awarded a hundred and twenty-nine grand awards to fifty businesses, um, totaling amount of three, about three point five million dollars.
So that's our last slide, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Makina, any questions, colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Kundra, you have another presentation?
Yes, uh, this will be our last presentation on section three, and the project manager is Kimberly Young.
Hello, can you hear me?
And that's not Kimberly.
Hello. Now, Kimberly sends her apologies, um, I'm Matthew Crowe, um, the Deputy Project Manager. Um, uh, so I've got a, I, I admire the um, ability for, for this board, uh, of public works, uh. You know, President Garcia, Vice President Villegas, and uh, President Pro Tem Davis to the stamina of going through till after one. So on that, uh, I'll try and be brief and uh, keep the jokes out of the presentation, which usually use up half my time. Um, so we're the last section of uh, the Purple Line, um, so section three, so next slide. Um, just a, a quick, uh, quick update on where the tunnel boring machines are, Iris, um, it's fifty-one percent. Uh, and if you look at the bottom right slide, that's where the pink triangle is, uh, just to the east of Selby Avenue on Wilshire. I'm about to go uh, cross-country underneath uh, apartments and residences and uh. Uh, single-family residences and condominiums and whatnot, um, and then um, the BL, TBN Aura. Um, is uh, just the west of Malcolm on, on Wilshire, one of the things, our, our production has been uh, steady. Um, it's uh, which, I, 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 our, our main interest is not maximum production, it's actually doing a proper job. And uh, our contractors been uh, doing that with uh, this pressurized envelope of tunneling, and uh, if I had uh. It wasn't ten past one, I'd share some cheesy um, uh, props to explain the process. But maybe, uh, maybe in three months' time, so uh, the tunneling, tunneling is, is still in Wilshire. And uh, and we've had a few, few little things where we've had to uh, uh, work with uh, um, some of your bureaus. And uh, it's been superb working with them, so uh, thanks very much to all your staff. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is the um, uh, the one station that's in, uh, within the city of Los Angeles, it's the Westwood UCLA Station. Um, uh, those of you who've been uh, driving around there, we're, we're, we're working with a power rig. Uh, in the, the center of the street there, um, you can see that on the uh, bottom left, that's actually installing de-watering wells, but we've got similar rigs. Installed in the soldier piles, um, and uh, we, we, we've completed the piles on the north side and uh. We're ripping through the ones on the south side, we're about three-quarters complete, um, so that's good. Um, on the right, bottom right is, uh, this is actually off-site, but the, they see the two, uh, fine, uh, gentlemen there. Um, that we're actually casting all these concrete deck panels that will, that will form the road surface as we excavate the station. Um, obviously installing geotechnical instrumentation and de-watering wells as we go along, and uh. Because we got two, the two of the entrances are uh, shoehorned uh, into existing buildings, we've been doing uh, a bunch of work with. Um, particularly the Mueller Group, uh, with ten-nine-twenty-one, we've been doing a bunch of re- reconfiguration of the uh. Of the building, uh, in advance of demolition of the uh, what we call the Chase Bank Building, which is uh, on the end of the building, which is demolished. To become the northeast entrance, and our southeast entrance, where there's that beautiful uh, Will Ryan Rose sculpture. Um, the big red rose, um, ten-nine-hundred Wilshire Boulevard, um, we're working, you know, very closely with the uh. The, the building owner on uh, how we uh, you know, design our pl- planning and uh. Of uh, the design and construction of the station, so uh, think, things going on well, I'll just come to that. Uh, at a late, to talk a bit more about that, a later slide about the, the upcoming work, um, next, next slide, please. Um, this is, uh, obviously, this is outside, the Westwood VA Station is uh, is uh, is generally within the, the federal. Uh, Veterans Affairs Administration campus, a little bit on Caltrans as well, a little bit on county. But uh, we've been making good progress there, and it somewhat impacts the city, because uh, we, I mentioned in the four oh five there. And uh, that's obviously one of the great arteries of uh, getting people around the city. Um, we've, we've completed, we, we've got to build a station, um, beneath the on and off ramps of the four oh five. And uh, we've actually completed not only the piling, but the uh, temporary decking, and uh, so that's been, that's been completed. And then the other, the other big work there, uh, on the VA can be interesting, so let's mention it. Um, obviously, it's a big hospital and uh, their utilities are kind of mission critical, they use steam. And you probably want, what does a hospital use steam for, um, they, they first of all use it for instrument, uh, sterilization for, for doing all those. Those uh, very important operations, uh, then they use the steam for uh, cooking and then heating, and so. We're having to build a redundant um, steam tunnel, um, uh, while we do our work so that uh, we uh. And, and it also relocates the um, steam line to build our station entrance, so that work's been going on well. Um, uh, so it kind of looks a bit like, uh, I guess a storm drain or a sewer, but uh, inside it's got a bunch of uh, pipes and kit. Um, so that's been going on well, um, we've been, you have all the pipes are in, the pipe is in, and the. We're just finishing off the uh, concreting of the vaults, um, the other bit of work there, there's a, um, a bit of, uh. We've got to do some uh, uh, utility relocations for uh, principally uh, S, uh, Southern California Edison, and that, that work started. Um, next slide. Okay, so this is uh, the penultimate slide, so uh, um, so basically. We look, look at the red line down, down, down the middle, that's where we are today. Um, obviously, re- re- utility relocations, uh, we're in the final throes of that, and uh, we're doing uh, the last ones of that concurrent with uh. The piling, the piling is, as I said, three-quarters done, so, you know, almost finished, but not quite, and then. Perhaps the most important thing is the um, third line down the decking. And as you can see, uh, that's going to start, um, you know, July this year, and why is that important? Um, we're not actually closing uh, Wilshire Boulevard, um, for this decking. Um, we're not actually closing, uh, Wilshire Boulevard, uh, for this decking operation, but we are, uh, over the week, we're going to do it over, uh, multiple weekends. About twelve, uh, about a dozen we- weekends, and, uh, we're going to be taking, uh, the, we're going to keep the, uh, uh, couple of lanes, uh, eastbound on Wilshire over the weekend, but, uh, um, westbound Wilshire, we'll have to take a detour over the weekends. And those of you who know the area, the traffic, uh, is a lot less, obviously, at the weekends. Um, but while we're doing that, that weekend decking, so, um, and then there's a, there's a, it's not, again, not a closure, but the intersection, uh, with Gailey over three weekends, you won't be able to make the, uh, you know, turn onto Wilshire or drive across Wilshire from Gailey. But obviously, Gailey's still open, but there'll be some, uh, traffic management to accommodate that. And again, thanks, uh, to the, uh, obviously, the, the great folks at, um, the, uh, LA, LA DOT for working with us on these, uh, these very complicated, um, traffic management plans and, uh, and helping us when we, when we kind of get into a pinch and we need some work done quick. Very, thank you very much, uh, for that. And then the, the last thing, it, it isn't actually a line on this, and, uh, that's kind of remiss of us, and I think we'll stick it on next, next time, is the tunneling. Um, the tunneling, we're, we're, when we're talking about the TBM tunneling, we're expecting the, the, uh, both TBMs to get to Constellation, which is the station Mike McKenna was talking about, um, around the end of the year, kind of plus or minus. Um, obviously, one goes before the other. So that will be, uh, I guess, a big event for, 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 for Metro and the Purple Line, uh, program is, um, you know, by the end of this year, plus or minus, the, uh, TBM tunneling will be completed. And it's just the, uh, the, uh, cross passages that have to be done as underground work. So that's, uh, that's kind of the things to look forward to in the next, uh, few months. Um, and, uh, I guess last slide, uh, Business Interruption Fund, has we got Marlon or someone to talk to it?
Yep. Yes, uh, for the Purple Line Extension, Section Three, we haven't awarded any grants yet, so I don't have any data for that. But just as an overview of the BIF, um, for all of the projects, uh, as of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, the BIF has awarded over thirteen hundred grants to four hundred and thirty-two businesses, um, for a total grant value of thirty-four, about thirty-four million dollars.
Well, tha- thanks for that. And, uh, I guess the next slide is lunch, is it lunch? Is the next slide? Come on, next slide. Look, it doesn't say lunch. Sorry about that. And if anyone's got any questions, uh, you know, far away, and if, if they're easy, I'll answer them. If they're difficult, uh, Jim Cohen can have a go.
Well, I'm sure we would have had a great, uh, fun time with you, but thank you for saving us, uh, time. We, like you said, we've been here since ten AM, but I'm sure your jokes are funny. And I look forward to, maybe we'll give you just one whole presentation to you, and we'll, we'll get all your jokes in.
Whatever, whatever. We're, we're public servants here, so, uh, I guess we shouldn't have humor. So, uh, too much, you know?
Well, and that, and that after we've been in a meeting for four minutes, four hours, so there you go.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. I don't, are there any questions, colleagues, commissioners? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Kundra, any, anymore?
No, uh, no, that, that concludes Metro's presentations for this, uh, this session.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate your time to the LA Metro team. Um, and colleagues, well, you guys are back in, uh, every quarter. Is that right?
I believe so. Uh, I, I just got a notification when we have to get our slides ready, so.
Okay, okay, good. So we look forward to your next presentation as well. Thank you, LA Metro team, for being here. Have a good rest of the week.
Bye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, Dr. Compos, have we cleared the desk, desk today?
Yes, you have.
Great. Thank you so much. Today's meeting is officially adjourned. Everyone have a good rest of the week.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.